Oh, you know what? I gotta log in. Oh, I was gonna make a sarcastic comment, but. Oh. Um. I was gonna go to the bathroom. Should I tell everybody? Okay. Okay, um, I think we're good to go. Peter, we're good from your perspective. Hello, everybody. Sorry to start the meeting a couple of minutes late. We were in a, an executive session that we moved into on the heels of a workshop that started at four o'clock. So I want to welcome everybody to chambers. We've got forty-six people with us on Zoom this evening, so we've got a full house. Welcome. This is the Portland City Council. We're in a regular meeting this evening, and I'll call our meeting to order and welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll? Counselor Fornier, here. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Dion.
Here.
Counselor Ali. Counselor Zaro.
Here.
Counselor Travaro.
Here.
Counselor Tora who is with us on Zoom. Hey, uh, Counselor Pelletier.
Here.
Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Mayor Snyder. Here. Okay, everybody is present, and as noted, we do have Counselor Travaro with, with us this evening on Zoom. We can see her. So Counselor, please raise your hand, and I'll do my best to keep an eye on my Zoom screen to make sure I'm calling on you at the appropriate time. So at this time, we're going to open it up for public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anybody with us in chambers or on Zoom who would like to speak to the council on a matter that is not being covered on tonight's agenda, now is the time. Right to you, Stephen Scherf.
Is in the wrong position. And it didn't work to fix it. Stephen Scherf of Brackett Street, I'm, I'm assuming you are referencing your previous meeting as not being part of this meeting, being your executive session. I intended to speak to the executive session, but there was no audio on the Zoom at four o'clock. So I couldn't, I wasn't even aware that you were, you just looked like you were chatting. All of a sudden you left the room. I quite frankly, don't understand your motive for an executive session. They're really, you know, they're, the public should be informed. If you're looking at locations for citing facilities, that should be a public conversation, not something you do behind closed doors. And I, I wanted to object to that. And I'm came to for the rest of the meeting because I was concerned that I wouldn't have audio for the rest of the meeting, so.
Uh, thank you for your comment. And next we'll go to Zoom. I've got Don Marietta. Don, if you're with us, you need to unmute yourself and just go ahead and give us your first and last name and the organization you represent or the neighborhood that you live in. And you've got three minutes on the clock. Okay, we're having some AV issues. It, it seems if there's anybody else in chambers who would like to step forward, I'm happy to go back and forth. Okay, I don't see anybody else in chambers, so I'll go to George Rowe on Zoom.
Uh, George Rowe, Hanover Street. So, uh, the Parks Director recently informed the Parks Commission that the Bat Cove West Storage Project that has been digging up Prebble Athletic Field next to Hannaford's has been delayed like ten months, something like that. And that they've really apparently have, they've encountered some very difficult subsurface conditions that they had, I guess, anticipated, but didn't realize just quite how tricky they would be. And I believe that that project is at least a fifty million dollar project. And I am just sort of always gobsmacked at the fact that there is almost no public visibility on what is going on with the enormous amount of money being spent on the stormwater compliance. You know, we occasionally have little presentations and whatnot, but considering that the much more modest elementary school renovations, which were capped, by the way, they literally could not spend more than a dime than they were allocated. Those projects have been under enormous scrutiny. There's been commissions and committees. I think Mark Dion, Belinda Ray, Nick Mavadonis, they all got to sit on a special oversight committee. There's been absolutely no citizen oversight of all of this money. And we have no good idea about cost overruns and about what's actually been going on with these projects. John Jennings had moved the site of that storage facility from marginal way over to the Preble Fields for his own reasons without any council approval of that, other than just letting him do it. And so I don't understand how literally hundreds of millions of dollars are being spent uh, over the course of at least the last decade and still very much in progress that we haven't had any real public scrutiny of this. And it's just unbelievably disappointing when some projects get all kinds of scrutiny and other projects just completely skate in terms of the public understanding what's going on on a quarterly basis, at least if not an annual basis. And having some sense of cost overruns and
Thirty-second warning.
The impact to our bond capacity and things like that. It's a huge glaring error in what's the city council's been doing for years. And it really needs to stop because it's hurting the credibility of a lot of the hardworking people who are trying to get us to a better place on the stormwater compliance. But it has this dark cloud over it of no transparency of any meaningful kind.
Uh, thank you for your comment. And is there additional public comment either on Zoom or in chambers? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period on items that are not on tonight's agenda, and I'll ask my colleagues on the council if anybody has an announcement this evening. Okay, looking for Counselor Travaro. Nope. Okay, I don't see any, so we'll move on from the announcements. And next on our agenda are recognitions. Will the clerk please read our first recognition?
Recognizing Peace into Chorus Bronze Award at the Anthem Awards. This is sponsored by Pious Ali, Counselor.
Counselor Ali.
Uh, thank you, Mayo. I am going to postpone that to a future date because, uh, I think I'm fixing to have rehearsals today, so they aren't able to join us.
Okay, so we'll postpone that recognition. Thank you very much for that explanation. And the next recognition is, does the clerk want to read that one into the record?
Sure. Recognizing Teresa Valier, founder of Friends of Woodford's Corner as Main Development Foundation's 2022 Downtown Hero, sponsored by Kate Snyder, Mayor.
Um, thank you, and I'll just take this moment to, um, to share a little bit about Teresa. So congratulations to Teresa Valier, Friends of Woodford's Corner, who will receive, as the clerk said, the Downtown Hero Award this April from the Main Development Foundation. So, um, would Friends of Woodford's Corner has grown quickly, and Teresa has been behind the scenes, has helped to accomplish nearly everything that they have done. When what started as a Facebook group in two thousand and fifteen became a community volunteer organization because Teresa had organized a railroad cleanup. She drew in dedicated people who helped the group file as a five oh one C three just two years later and put together a board of directors with skills that mapped onto the Main Street model, so the organization could become a Main Street affiliate. And at this point, I'm going to turn to Counselor Zaro because I know that you had some suggestions on that front and were helpful in getting that community organization to actually become a Main Street affiliate, which is a pretty big deal and a, and a great, um, a great asset for the city of Portland. So thank you, Counselor Zaro. Though Teresa has no background in economic development, historic preservation, or community organizing, nor is she trained as an urban planner. She's used her background in the food and hospitality industry and her training and experience as a clinical social worker to build relationships and organize events that helped set in motion the rebuilding of Woodford's Corner. In two thousand and twenty-two, Friends of Woodford, Woodford's Corner has reached a particularly, or had reached a particularly noteworthy milestone, leasing an office in a newly revitalized landmark building on the corner right there. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. And raising enough money to hire a paid staff person who will finally relieve Teresa of some of the man, uh, some of the burdens of managing and performing the myriad administrative tasks that keep the organization moving forward. I don't see Teresa here with us in chambers. I'm gonna look, glasses on, glasses off, to see if she's with us on Zoom. But in any event, what I, what, what we all wanted to do tonight was offer our congratulations and recognition of a great community member. So thank you for your work, Teresa Valier. Okay, um, and next we will move to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March sixth City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Phillips with a second from Counselor Zaro. Are there any questions or comments from the council about those draft minutes? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote to approve those minutes. Counselor Fornier? Yes. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Yes.
Travaro? Thank you. Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder. I'm a yes, and so that passes unanimously. Um, and now we move into proclamations. So we've got several this evening. Will the clerk please read proclamation fifteen?
Proclamation fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, recognizing April twenty twenty-three as Genocide Awareness and Prevention Month. Sponsored by Kate Snyder, Mayor.
Thank you, and I'm actually going to hand this one over to my colleague, Counselor Ali.
Mayo, my computer is being slow, and I only have one of the two proclamations printed. So you may have to read that.
Okay, I, I will be happy to read this, but I do want to thank Counselor Ali for his, um, close attention to proclamations and working with staff to make sure that proclamations that we see each year are brought forward with, um, appropriate edits and updates. So thank you, Counselor Ali. I'll go ahead and read this one into the record. Again, this is the proclamation recognizing April twenty twenty-three as Genocide Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas genocide is a human tragedy inspired by the most repugnant, repugnant elements of hatred, intolerance, and inhumanity. And whereas Article Two of the United Nations Genocide Convention contains, contains a narrow definition of the crime of genocide, which includes a mental element, intent to destroy in whole or in part a national ethical, sorry, eth, ethnic, racial, or religious group as such, and a physical element, killing members of the group, causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of the group, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part, imposing measures intended to prevent births within the group and forcibly transferring children of the group to another group. And whereas for decades, campaigns of dislocation and murder have been used with a clear and ultimate purpose to annihilate an other race, religion, or ethnic minority through coordinated massacre. And whereas, as a result of genocide, millions of people, adults and children alike, have been murdered, had their cultural identities stolen or experienced forced relocation. And whereas by recognizing, remembering, and educating ourselves on past and ongoing instances of genocide, we help protect historic memory, ensure that similar atrocities do not occur again, and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas residents are becoming informed as to the causes and effects of genocide, as well as the ramifications of these tragedies in our shared human history on the generations of people descended from survivors of genocide and those impacted by genocide today. And whereas the month of April is designated as Genocide Awareness and Prevention Month in recognition of the many genocides which have occurred or begun in the month of April, so that all members of the human family may preserve the memory of victims, honor survivors, and stand together in opposition to the possibility of future genocide by fostering peaceful coexistence between diverse communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kate Snyder, Mayor of the City of Portland, Maine, and members of the City Council do hereby recognize April twenty twenty-three as Genocide Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Portland, Maine, and invite the residents of Portland to commemorate the solemn observance and recognize how much more we must do in the struggle against these unthinkable crimes against humanity. Signed and sealed this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-three. Thank you. Will the clerk please read proclamation sixteen?
Proclamation sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, recognizing April twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three as American Heritage Month, and this one's also sponsored by Kate Snyder, Mayor.
And I hand it over to my counselor, my, my colleague, Counselor Ali.
Thank you, Mayo. I think I'm your counselor. I'm not allowed.
You're my, you are.
Uh, proclamation recognizing April twenty twenty-three as Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contribution to virtually every aspect of American society, including in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military, and culture. And whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and tradition with neighbors and friends, while also setting fine example of model citizens and public servants. And whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed, which have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas, Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas, the history of Arab Americans in the United States remain neglected and defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech. And whereas, they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas, the incredible contribution and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Kate Snyder, Mayor of the City of Portland, Maine, and members of the City Council do hereby recognize April twenty twenty-three as Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Portland. And invite citizens of Portland to celebrate the many accomplishments and rich history of our Arab American neighbors that add to the diversity, strength, and vibrancy of Portland. Sign and seal this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-three by Kate Snyder, Mayor of City of Portland. Thank you, Mayo.
Thank you, Counselor Ali. Will the clerk please read our proclamation seventeen?
Proclamation seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-three, recognizing April first through the seventh, twenty twenty-three, as the Week of the Young Child, sponsored by Kate Snyder, Mayor.
Thank you, and I'd be happy to read this into the record. Whereas the first years of a child's life, child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development, laying the foundation for all future learning. And whereas high-quality early childhood programs provide important benefits to children, families, and the city by saving taxpayer dollars, making working families more economically secure, and preparing children to succeed in school, earn higher wages, and live healthier lives. And whereas there are fewer available slots in both home-based and center-based early childhood education programs than the number of children from birth to age five, limiting access for working families that need an affordable, mixed-delivery early childhood education system that offers a range of high-quality options that meet their needs. And whereas young children need skilled, educated, competent, consistent, and compensated early childhood educators to ensure that children, supported by families in our community, have the early experiences they need for a strong foundation. And whereas, in celebration of the National Association for the Education of Young Children's Week, Young Children's Week of the Young Child, the City of Portland expresses its support for continuing to advance the early childhood education system for children, families, and educators. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Kate Snyder, Mayor of the City of Portland, and members of the Portland City Council recognize the efforts of the Main Association for the early, for the education of young children. And Portland Works for Kids to promote early learning and healthy development and recognize April first through seventh as the Week of the Young Child. Signed and sealed this twentieth day of March, Kate Snyder. Thank you. And lastly, we'll go to, I'm gonna say lastly, but I know we've got a lot tonight, our last proclamation this evening. Will the clerk please read eighteen?
Proclamation eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, recognizing April third through the ninth, twenty twenty-three, as National Public Health Week, sponsored by Kate Snyder, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and I will read this one into the record as well. Hold on. Okay. Okey-dokey. Okay, recognizing April third through ninth as National Public Health Week, whereas the week of April third through nine, through ninth is National Public Health Week, and the theme is centering and celebrating cultures and health. And whereas, between the start of the COVID nineteen pandemic and August twenty twenty-two, life expectancy in the U.S. decreased by one and a half years with the most significant decreases observed in Black and Hispanic populations. And whereas racial and ethnic minority populations in the United States continue to experience disparities in illness and death rates. In Portland, sixteen point six percent of people identifying as Hispanic and seven point four percent of those identifying as Black have no health insurance compared to seven percent of the entire population of Portland. And whereas the United States has the highest maternal mortality rate of any developed country and is the only developed country to see those rates rising. And whereas, according to a February twenty twenty-three report by the Maine Attorney General's Office, ten thousand one hundred and ten drug overdoses were reported in twenty twenty-two, including seven hundred and sixteen suspected or confirmed deaths. And wherein, whereas in urban environments like Portland, health status can differ by neighborhood due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community context, and access to healthy food, education, and healthcare. And whereas, public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recovery, recover from the impact of a full range of health threats. And public health action has played a major role in reducing and in some cases eliminating the spread of infectious disease. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Kate Snyder, Mayor of the City of Portland, Maine, and members of the City Council do hereby recognize the week of April third through ninth, twenty twenty-three, as National Public Health Week, and call upon the people of Portland to celebrate the impact of public health, as well as to encourage family and friends to adopt preventive lifestyle habits. Signed and sealed this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-three. And um, for anybody who's checking out the agenda online, we do have a plain, um, language version that I'd like to hand off to my colleague, Counselor Fornier, to read into the record.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, I think it's really important, um, as the Chair of Health and Human Services and Public Safety. One of the things we've been talking about is making sure that the language of these proclamations is, uh, plain language, so it's easily understandable for the public. Um, and sometimes with the whereas language, um, the message can get a little bit lost. And so when we met this past week for Health and Human Services, we talked about, um, just taking this opportunity to read the alternate text so that it's available for everyone, um, in that plain language. So thank you so much for allowing me to read this. So, Portland National Public Health Week proclamation, so the week of April third through the ninth, twenty twenty-three, is National Public Health Week, and the theme is centering and celebrating cultures and health. So until three years ago, life expectancy, or how long people live on average, has slowly increased over time because, because of advances in medicine and technology. So from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, life expectancy in the U.S. decreased by one point five years with Black and Hispanic populations impacted the most. So some highlights of public health work and equities. Minority populations in the U.S. continue to have higher illness and death rates. In Portland, sixteen point six percent of Hispanic and seven point four percent of Black populations have no health insurance. This is compared to seven percent of the overall population of Portland. More women die in childbirth in the U.S. than any other developed country, and the U.S. is the only country to see these numbers go up. In Maine, there were ten thousand one hundred and ten drug overdoses reported in twenty twenty-two. Seven hundred and sixteen of those overdoses ended in death. In larger cities like Portland, how healthy you are can depend on where you live. Access to parks and sidewalks, air quality, community connectedness, and access to healthy food, education, and healthcare all impact your health. Public health professionals help communities. Public health, public health helps to prevent, prepare for, resist, and recover from health threats. This includes disease outbreaks such as COVID nineteen pandemic, measles, natural disasters, and disasters caused by human activity. Public health action has played a major role in reducing and in some cases eliminating the spread of infectious disease. For these reasons, our mayor, Kate Snyder, and the City of Portland, Maine, members of the City Council recognize the week, April third through the ninth, twenty twenty-three, as National Public Health Week. We thank those working in the field of public health, and we call upon the people of Portland to celebrate the impact of public health and encourage family and friends to adopt healthy lifestyle habits.
Thank you. That is helpful. Thank you, Counselor Fornier. I appreciate that. Okay, moving on from proclamations this evening and into our consent items. So we've got a couple of items tonight under our consent calendar. Will the clerk please read orders one fifty and one fifty-one?
Order one fifty, twenty-two, twenty-three, declaring August sixth through the ninth, twenty twenty-three, the Circus Mercus at Payson Park Festival, sponsored by Daniel West, interim city manager, and order one fifty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, declaring June eleventh, twenty twenty-three. It's Re Cerim Music Festival, sponsored by Daniel West, interim city manager.
Thank you very much. And just so folks in the audience understand, we'll take public comment on these two items at the same time after we hear from the city manager, who will provide context for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I see Andy Downs out there, my, my good friend who'd handle these events. I don't think there's anything, um, specific, uh, that, that we have to update you on. These are pretty regular events. Andy, if you could maybe just give a little bit on, on the timing of the, of the circus one, I think it's August sixth and ninth, is that correct, or through the ninth? Just to make sure that everybody understands that will be, um, at Payson Park. And then the, um, Main Academy of Modern Music will be at the Ocean Gate Parking Lot for Sunday, June eleventh, and that will be a music festival that will be during the day, but will have the, um, stopping, uh, at ten o'clock. Um, and most of the music will be just during the day period, but Andy's here if we have any specific questions.
Uh, great. I appreciate that. Thank you. If there's any public comment on either of these items, please come, step forward in chambers. Don't hesitate. Come right up to the mic. I'll start on Zoom, I think. There we go. Uh, first commenter is Devon Green.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members and city staff. Thank you so much for all that you do for the city. I want to start by saying that I'm a huge fan of Circus Mercus, but I have a couple of things that I just want to call attention to about this specific event. You just mentioned that this is a regular event. This is, to my knowledge, never been held in Pace and Park. I believe that they're usually at Fort Allen, and it's not like a big top event. And most of the larger events that happen in Pace and Park happen in the Triangle, which is in a different location. Obviously, we have gone through the process with the larger music festival with C-Three Presents. And I appreciate that with this, there's a lot more info. There's a map included. It's three thousand people over the two days instead of forty thousand. But there's also, like, the parking is just going to be on city streets. And my main issue actually is that in the process of learning about the festival, I found out that there's some infrastructure underneath the part of the park where they are suggesting that this event be held. So I actually didn't get any of this information until this morning. So I scrambled to get in touch with Brad Rowland, the engineer for the city, and he let me know that there's a variety of infrastructure under the park in that specific area, including a sixty-inch pipe, three rows of fourteen-foot-wide box culverts, which are four hundred and fifty feet long each, and electrical conduit running end to end of the conduits that are only thirty-six inches below the ground surface. And so he had some concerns also about four-foot poles being dug into the ground. So I guess I would just say that's something for y'all to look into. I did just send that to you, but because I've been scrambling to get this information, I did not get it to your emails earlier, but it is in your inboxes. And mostly what I want to say is that this is just another example, I think, of where it would really benefit you all to do the work to really figure out policies, procedures and permitting application processes around what events to hold and how to use public space for profit and what that looks like. Obviously, this is a much smaller event, but it's still an instance of a public park being used for profit. It's a smaller space, so it's much easier, but I just hope that you'll do that work. And I'm not sure how this became.
Second warning.
Yeah, I'm not sure how this became a consent item, lumped in with another event, but nobody in the neighborhood knew about this. I don't even know if the council knew about it. We just found out about it. And I think it's really important for there to be transparency and for people to be included in the process. And, you know, just to give the information that's needed and make sure that the due diligence is done. Thank you so much.
Devon, thank you for your comment. I lost Zoom there for a little bit, but I think I'm back. So if you would like to speak on Zoom, go ahead and raise your hand. I don't have any hands raised there right now, but it could be because I just got reconnected. But we do have a speaker with us here in chambers, so we'll hand it over to you, Stephen.
Stephen Schaffer, Brackett Street. Good time, make a plug that since you're going to be digging in the ground with mechanical means, you should be calling DigSafe, and DigSafe will come out and mark out where significant infrastructure is for you so that they don't hit it. And I would hope that the city would not require the event organizers to do it, but the city would do it itself. Even on your own property, you need to call DigSafe. DigSafe is as simple as calling eight-one-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other public comment on the consent calendar before the council this evening? Orders one fifty and one fifty-one. Okay, I do not see anybody, so I'm going to close public comment and come back to the council, please, for a motion.
So moved.
Counselor Rodriguez with a second from Counselor Ali. And I'm looking to the council for any discussion on these two items. Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief question about the information we just found out about. Is there anything that the council has to do to avoid? I totally want to heed the eight-one-one call, but in terms of, I believe that the venue, the digging just needs to be moved based on the infrastructure that we're now aware of. Is there anything the council needs to do with our motion today in that regard?
I was just trying to pull up the order. That may be more of a question for Michael, but I think that the order doesn't specify the location of the event itself. I was going to have Andy come up. I know that we have a, I just wanted him to talk a little bit about the process that we have too, since there was a question about that. We do have a pretty extensive process that we go through for each of these events and looking at at these types of issues, and maybe you could talk about that specifically, Andy, and with regard to this event as well.
Sure, thank you. So regarding the DigSafe, so with the staking and what's proposed for Dyer's Flat. It is subject to DigSafe. So we've been working with the organizers about making sure they go through that process, and we're working with them currently about the staking. So that's something that we do manage internally. For all the events that come through, and we have roughly eight hundred or so events that come through our facilities and our parks, we have an internal process of working with the organizers. This particular organizer, Portland Ovations, we work with very closely at Merrill Auditorium. They're one of our prime tenants. But when an application comes forward, we meet once a month with different city departments, parking, business licensing, police, fire and others to go through and evaluate whether this is going to be done safely, what the impact will be. So everything from a small-scale event to a large scale, like that's brought forward. So there is a pretty thorough process that we go through to analyze and determine whether this is something that we want to bring forward to council. So we go through that process prior.
Thanks, Andy. And I would say that these are usually consent items that are before the council. And I do think, I'm just looking at the order, I don't want to speak for Michael, but it looks like we've identified specifically in the order that the area where the festival would be, would be that Dyer's Flat area, which I think is the area that's being referenced. Is that?
Correct.
So it would, I mean, are you comfortable with the materials you've presented? That that's the location that will work best for this, and you've talked with staff?
Yeah, we've discussed with staff and with the organizers on the best location. If there is a problem with the DigSafe, we would have to reevaluate.
Is this required to do tonight? Can we look at that and have that done and bring it back to the council?
For the city, I think absolutely I would ask the organizer if that's doable.
Get him on the mic.
Thank you for stepping forward.
Counselor, hi. I'm Merrick Hager from Portland Ovations. I'm the production manager there. We have a window closing for announcement and public relations and ticket sales, but obviously we don't want to drive a stake into an electrical conduit, so we will defer to council's decision and advice.
Thank you. Oh, cut back to you, Counselor Rodriguez.
I don't have a follow-up question, but I want to hear.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fornier. Thank you so much. I'm just curious about process because I know we obviously had a very big decision about the concert that was brought forward to Pace and Park, and it seemed like there was a lot of public engagement in that process. And I'm wondering how this particular incident differs because it feels like, I don't know if it's on the promoter, it's their responsibility to engage with the neighborhood organizations or the abutters in this case, where it seems like this is another pretty big event. And as we heard from the public, there, you know, feels like there's a lack of engagement from their perspective. So I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about whose responsibility is it to engage with the people that are around where this is going to be happening so that they feel like they're a part of that decision-making process?
Typically, we ask the organizer to reach out and provide outreach to the neighborhood and to the areas that will be impacted. This compared to the last festival declaration we brought forward is very different. The reason this is coming in front of council is because of the duration, not because of the size. So the size of it itself, with the number of attendees, that's typically handled internally. And we can inform different groups in the area of these events that are happening. But again, there are, you know, close to eight hundred events that we're managing, so the outreach is challenging. So for the larger, more impactful ones, we certainly do our best to engage, but we do ask organizers to do that.
So considering this one is closer to maybe three thousand people, I wonder if you could talk a little bit, how many other events do we have at Pace and Park that are about the same size that are happening this year?
Well, it's seven hundred and fifty people per performance, so it won't be three thousand people at one time. So in scale, it is a little bit smaller. But I don't think we've brought anything, I don't think we've brought anything to Pace and Park outside of a road race that needed council approval. So I think there's a new interest in Pace and Park, which is great, and we're very supportive of that. So we're starting to see more inquiries come in, but nothing to the scale.
Last question. I certainly also hear the concern about parking. I live near Pace and Park, and parking is challenging when we were back in Little League days, and that's fifty people. So thinking about multiplying that multiple times, is there something within their packet that talks about parking impact or how parking mitigation would happen? There is not space for that many cars in that area, especially considering the construction that's down there. So I wonder if we could talk a little bit about that.
So I know organizers are reaching out to local churches and Shepherds High School and trying to mitigate the parking challenges. Also, in the advertising and in the marketing, it is encouraging people to walk, use the trail, bar pool, doing everything they can to mitigate the parking challenges that could arise. But we work very closely on what's available and make strong recommendations on parking plans that are presented.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion from the council on either item? Counselor Dion.
I don't remember who made the public comment, but the person brought up the correct topic. When we were discussing the major, well, the initiative that would have brought a significant concert to Pace and Park, one of the final conversations centered on this notion that the licensing scheme should be revisited. I looked at it at that time, and really, the language and the intent was for something a little bit greater than a significant family gathering and everything that goes along with that. And it's nothing against parks, but I mean, they're kind of stuck trying to approve things with language and standards that probably are not as current as we would like them to do. So I guess this is a comment and a question of the chair. I don't know if this is an item for consideration by the executive reporting back to us or whether it should be a question that goes, and I could be wrong on jurisdiction, to public safety as a licensing question to determine that. I take the advice of the interim manager at this point, but I think before we're presented with other questions or proposals, we ought to take a look, see that particular ordinance as a possible candidate for revision. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor, and I'll look to the city manager for discussion of where that licensing language review could live.
Yeah, so that's chapter nineteen is my recollection, and it's about festivals. It is rather old. We have tweaked it a couple of times. I know we had language that specifically, probably fifteen, twenty years ago, that addressed First Amendment events and so on. So it's been a little while since we've looked at it. There are specific triggers. We do have processes in place, which Andy just described, but we're happy to look at that again and talk about that a little bit more. When I think about where it would live, I guess public safety makes sense, I think. But I'm not sure if that was the first committee that jumped to my mind, but we can make sure, I'll just say that we'll put a pin in it. In fact, as we're talking right now, I'm emailing staff, and we'll have that on our radar screen and hope to bring that back to some council committee to review very shortly.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you for that comment. I appreciate it. Other discussion from the council? Okay. Seeing none, so we've got this consent calendar before us. I think we're ready to vote, but we do have a flag on the issue of licensing language so that as we make our way through these decisions, we're comfortable that that's as up-to-date as can be. So we'll keep our eye on that, but we'll move on this that's before us this evening, and we'll go ahead and vote.
Counselor Fornier? Yes, Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ali?
Yay.
Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Counselor Travarro?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Orders one fifty and one fifty-one both pass unanimously. And now we head into licenses. Will the clerk please read order one fifty-two?
Order one fifty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, granting municipal officers approval of Citrus. Application is for a Class A lounge with indoor entertainment and outdoor dining on private property located at One City Center, sponsored by Daniel West, interim city manager.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on order one fifty-two? Okay, we do have a hand up on Zoom, and I'm probably not going to get this name right because it's all one word in lowercase, but Blaine Tully?
Yeah, I think they can.
Yeah, I am Mark Olson, the owner of One City Wine Academy and Citrus, and I just wanted to point out one thing, that is that this is not a new business license. We actually have been in this space for ten years, and this is our third year as Citrus. We did change our DBA, and we're actually just switching away from a Class A restaurant to a Class A lounge because while we wanted to sell food, the people just wanted to dance. So we've had to change the style of license, but this is actually not a new license, but just a change of class. And with that in mind, I spoke with Tom Williams, the health inspector, and he said he did not need to do a health inspection. However, because it is technically a new style of license, we have been contacted by the Grease Trap people. And so I would love to ask City Hall, first point is to clarify that this is not a new license, but that we've been here for a while. And then secondly, to ask City Hall to do as Tom Williams with Health has suggested and not allow us to go through the Grease Trap inspection process. Again, we did less than a thousand dollars in food sales last year, and that's why we're changing our license. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here, and thank you for that comment. Before we move into it, is there any other public comment on order one fifty-two? Neither on Zoom or in chambers, so I'll close public comment and come back to the council for a motion, please.
Second.
Counselor Ali with a second from Counselor Rodriguez. And we move into council discussion. I think I just want to turn to the city manager and ask when new is a characterization of different, I think, in this circumstance. So I just wanted to clarify and sort of mark what the owner talked about.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I'm not sure if Zach or Jessica Hanscom are on the Zoom link. Are either one of you?
Got Zach with us.
Zach, could you weigh in on that?
Sorry for the glare.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Yeah, a change of classification is a new license, and it says it in the description that the establishment currently holds a Class One FSC. And so it's a change.
Thanks, Zach. So yes, it is. It's due to the fact that it is a change.
Great, thank you for the clarification. Any other council discussion on this license before we vote? Nope, we're good to go ahead and vote on order one fifty-two.
Counselor Fornier just stepped out. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ali? Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Counselor Travarro?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes, order one fifty-two passes eight-zero. And Mr. Olson, thanks so much for being here with us this evening, helping to clarify and also for doing business in the city of Portland. Will the clerk please read order one fifty-three?
Order one fifty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, granting municipal officers approval of Sarah. Application is for a Class Three and Four food service establishment with outdoor dining on public property located at One Monument Square, Suite 103. This is sponsored by Daniel West, interim city manager.
Thank you. Is there a public comment on order one fifty-three?
No public comment. I'm Steve. I'm the owner of Sarah. I'm just here in case there's questions.
Thanks, Steve. Good to have you here. We'll come back to you if there are. I don't see any hands up on Zoom. So we'll close public comment, and I'll come back to the council for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Rodriguez with a second from Counselor Zaro. And is there any council discussion, any questions for Steve? I don't think so, but thanks for being here. We'll go ahead and vote on order one fifty-three.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ali? Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Counselor Travarro?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes, order one fifty-three passes eight-zero. Steve, thanks for being here. Thanks for doing business in the city of Portland. Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, moving on. We've got one communication in our packet this evening. Will the clerk please read Communication twenty-seven?
Communication twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-three, regarding implementation of LD two thousand and three, an act to implement the recommendations of commission to increase housing opportunities in Maine by studying zoning and land use restrictions. This is sponsored by Christine Gromando, Director of Planning and Urban Development.
Great, and I look first to you. Great. And I look first to you, city manager.
Christine is here. She has a brief presentation. Her memo was, was lengthy and she wants to boil it down very quickly for you. I believe she may have one slide to show you, but if not, it's just going to be a brief summary of what her memo says.
Christine.
Hi, thank you, City Manager West and Mayor Snyder and members of the council. That's a great intro. There's a, there's a memo in the council's packet, communication regarding LD 2003. And it provides a summary in a few, a few different ways. And I'm going to just provide, I'm going to try and boil that down, what those key points are of that. And I can throw up a slide up of those as well, but I'm going to just talk for a moment. So LD 2003, it was signed by the governor in April 2020, 2022. And it is aimed at creating housing requirements for municipalities on the topics of residential density, zoning, ADUs, and affordability, among some other things. And Portland has analogous regulations for all of the elements of LD 2003. We meet or exceed these requirements in most cases. And we have many other housing tools and policies beyond the scope of what LD 2003 contemplates. But we, we word them differently. We structure them differently because they've been implemented here over, over years. And so for us and for this analysis, it wasn't, it wasn't as simple as just checking a box. Do we do it? Do we, do we not? It required a little interpretation and sort of combing through some of the detail of our respective wordings of those, of those requirements. So I would say it's not a matter of the city adopting LD 2003 whole cloth for staff. The exercise is really doing that analysis to see where are there gaps? And where do we do, need to do some reconciliation for, with our land use code to new, to new state requirements? So the communication in your packet goes at this a few different ways. There's some sort of lengthier commentary on each item, but there's also a table that kind of gives a snapshot by, by section of where there's just no issue or where we have maybe partial consistency, not complete consistency. And then, and then there's four bullet points at the end that summarizes those. And I'm gonna, I'm just going to go over those real, real quick. So LD 2003, it has density bonus requirements for zones where multifamily is allowed. We do this in addition to height and other dimensional bonuses. But there is one zone where that's not the case. That's the R6. So we would need to look at adding bonuses to the R6 as well. There's a requirement that up to four dwelling units be permitted on residential lots, unbuilt residential lots. A subset of our low-density residential zones do not currently meet these requirements. This has implications for them. Most of our zones do, and in some cases far exceed four dwelling units per lot. LD 2003 has a requirement that zones not have different dimensional requirements for single family. As for multifamily development, two of our zones have different dimensional requirements. Our four and our five have some different standards for whether you're single family or multifamily, things like setbacks and minimum lot sizes. And lastly, ADUs are to have the same dimensional standards as single-family dwellings in LD 2003. This is true citywide, except two island zones have different minimum lot sizes for, for ADUs. So we, in future revisions, will look to those standards for bringing those R code and LD 2003 closer together. There's a couple of substantive points here, but in, by and large, we're, we're in a good place with it. And as part of our recode process, we're looking at all these points about how we're going to implement changes that are keeping LD 2003 in mind. And with that, I don't think a slide of those four points is necessary, but if it helps anyone, I can throw it up. But I talked through all of it. So I'll just wrap it there and happy to answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Gromando, for this communication and for being here this evening. This is a communication, so there's no public comment. It's not a debatable item. There's no action that the council is taking tonight. But if there's any comments or questions from the council, happy to, happy to put those forward at this time. Counselor Ali?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I read through the, how do you call it, the, the, the materials that is shared by us. I also know that the housing, the legislative committee did, supported this, I think, last year. But I wonder if, I know our calendars are full and stuff, stuff's plate is full. Is there a possibility of a workshop down the line?
On LD 2003 specifically?
Yes.
I'll look to the manager for that one.
I, I think, I mean, I will say that my recollection of the calendar in March, April and May is pretty packed. We could do, circle back with you on an update and I'll flag that for sometime in May. We will have, Counselor Trevorrow has requested a workshop on affordable housing. That will be coming April 30. April 3rd. And so we may have some discussion about some of these concepts at that time, but I will try to flag that counselor for sometime in May.
Yeah, because last night when I was going through, I asked myself if the everyday person who owns a property in Portland, who may want to do something like this, will they understand all the legislative jargon in it? Yeah, so. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the suggestion. Christine, I've got a quick question for you. So the, my understanding is that the legislation is required, compliance is required by July 1. And your memo is really helpful and very thorough. And there are places in it that explain that in some cases, not most, but in some, Portland does have some work to be fully consistent or compliant. So I wanted to ask you about that July 1 deadline and, and how we're, how we're looking at that as a city, knowing how important it is to, to be in compliance.
Sure. Thank you for that question. It is July 1. However, I will point out, there's still rulemaking underway for LD 2003. There's still a lot of discussion at the state level about exactly how to interpret many of these standards. And so no one has adopted it yet. And, and, and it's going to be a fairly tight window. And I expect maybe too, too tight in some ways, because there, there's still clarification underway what some of, some of these standards mean. And that process is not even, that's not wrapped up yet. I express it, expect it to be wrapped up fairly soon. I would, I would expect April, potentially May. It would be a really short window for communities for, for many, if any, to adopt by July 1. So we know that date's out there. But I, I'm not overly concerned. One, I think we're in very good company. We're also in a very good place. And as I've said, we have, we have basically policies implemented that are analogous to LD 2003, except for a few areas. And so we, by the July 1 deadline, I, I think those items will not be on the books yet, but we will be diligently pursuing them. So there will be amendments out by then. We are approached to some of that interpretation discussion underway is to kind of safely sort of make safe interpretations of where we think they're going to land in some cases. And to actively have regulations as part of, some of the amendments will be rolling out by June for Recode Phase 2. We're going to be rolling out some sort of groups of chapters at a time, and we're going to pick those up in those first, those first rollouts early summer. And so they'll be actively in review. I do not think they'll be adopted by July 1, but I don't think there'll be negative consequences. There's not going to be sort of an enforcement arm around those, around those pieces. And I think the fact that we're actively pursuing implementation to bring us in alignment will, will be okay. And I'm actively talking to, to folks with the state about this. And I'll certainly keep the council posted on progress and any other sort of direction or news coming out, out from, from the state on this matter as well. And again, as was mentioned, we'll be speaking about affordable housing in April. And if we have any new news, we're happy to bring that forward too.
Thank you very much. Spring's going to be busy for planning, I think. Thanks for bringing up the context of Recode Phase 2. And, and the fact that that's around the corner as well. So any other questions or comments from the council on this communication? Okay, I don't see any. So we'll move on, but with our thanks to Director Gromando for filling us in this evening and sharing information. Okay, so we're going to move on to resolutions and I'll ask the clerk to please read Resolution 7.
Resolution 7, 2223, adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2024 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan, according to appropriations for the community development block grant home and emergency solutions, grant programs and certifications pertaining thereto, sponsored by Daniel West, interim city manager.
Thank you. And I understand that we will have Lawson Condry, who is the Chair of the Community Development Block Grant Allocation Committee, with us this evening to offer some context. Oh, there you are. Okay, I'm looking for you on Zoom. You're here in person. Great. Thanks so much for being here.
Yeah, I have some notes. Hi, everyone. Thanks to, thanks for serving everyone. I'm Lawson Condry, 213 Auburn Street, Port Hurrying, Chair of the Community Development Block Grant Allocation Committee. So first, we, the committee, I'll speak on behalf of everyone, want to thank all the many organizations who applied this year and are grateful for all the work they do for and with the city and people of Portland. There were nine applications for development and six were able to get funding. There were 14 applications for social services and nine were able to get funding. I just have a couple of key points. I know everyone has the letter from us and the city manager. One, we support and agree with how the city manager was able to allocate, reallocate the funds based on how we originally scored and scored the applications. It's largely based on our recommendations and given her wide discretion, more organizations can now receive funding. The second key point is for community policing. This is something the committee has recommended before and are glad the city manager was able to make this change, or at least recommending this change. We've highlighted this in the report, but I want to vocalize here that the committee supports community policing and the mission. However, given the need in the city for an array of diverse support services and the fact that those services will only become more in demand, then we need to find more creative solutions to address those problems and issues. We believe it's imperative to provide as much funding as possible to those organizations. So by reallocating the community policing funds away from the CDBG overall fund, just makes it for more organizations to get money. So we hope the council agrees.
Thank you so much. And I know we're going to hear from our interim city manager, Danielle West, but I just want to remind people who are following along with the agenda that tonight we have the opportunity here to hear public comment, but we will not be taking action tonight. So just a reminder to the community that that's what we're doing tonight. So I'll hand it over to the city manager and then we'll head right into a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank the CDB Eligitation Committee as well for all their hard work, as well as city staff. Mary Davis and her team really works extremely closely with the committee and with me to make sure that all of these recommendations get made in a timely manner. So thank you to everybody for all of your hard work. As Lawson just said, I do have more discretion than, than the committee does. And so I was able to take a lot of their recommendations and then also work with staff to try to find some additional funds, specifically CARES Act funding to help address the significant needs that we see in the social services area. I just would note, I know the council's well aware of this. We talk a lot about all these social service programs pretty regularly. They serve a major issue, one of the council's goals, to address homelessness and the housing crisis. So really tried to focus in on that and try to find ways in which to provide funding to a variety of organizations that the committee just couldn't reach within their limited discretion. So as Lawson noted, the administration and planning, that basically evens out. So there was no changes there with regard to development activities. I took all of the allocation committee's recommendations and just made a switch to fund the Hope House. They had specifically some waterproofing needs and the Hope House serves our asylum-seeking population. And so thought that was, first of all, the, the amount of money that was available lined right up with what we had and thought that was directly connected to all of the different things that we're trying to do with the asylum-seeking population in Portland. And then lastly, with regard to the social services section, you'll see as, as Lawson described as well, that I made some tweaks to the recommendations, mostly to ser, to be able to serve more people. So moving, recommending the move of 150,000 for community policing to the general fund. That is something obviously I'm very connected to, and I know that the community takes well advantage of and is a great program, but I think it's better served in the general fund. And so that opened up additional monies as well as some additional CARES Act funding in the amount of $106,000 and change. And then some Cotton Street proceeds from a sale of, that were $20,000. So ultimately that allowed me to provide additional funding to fully fund Catholic Charities ILAP program to be able to assist asylum seekers. And also the Catherine Morrell Day Nursery Childcare Voucher Program, which is heavily used. And as I think we've heard in the past, that program serves people and helps them a lot of times stay just outside or be able to continue to stay just outside of the homeless situation and crisis situation because they do get that assistance through that voucher program. So saw that as a significant need. Additionally, we, I took some of the Cotton Street money and put it towards the Preble Street Food Program. So all of that allowed us to fund those additional programs, as I mentioned. Happy to answer any questions. And, and as the mayor said, we won't be voting on this until our next meeting on April 10, but we'll be taking public comment both evenings and either night, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much for that. So like I said, we will head into the public comment. If you'd like to comment tonight, that's great. You can hold your comment until next week. We ask that you don't comment on both nights. So either tonight or on April 10. And I know the clerk is going to be keeping track of folks who have the opportunity to speak tonight, something we do during the budget process, to ensure that people have as much opportunity to comment as possible, but not two times. So anybody in chambers want to come forward to talk about Resolution 7? I have a hand up on Zoom, so I'll head right over there. Victoria Morales, you've got the, you've got the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Snyder, City Manager West, city councilors and staff. My name is Victoria Morales. I'm the Executive Director at Quality Housing Coalition. And QHC is extremely grateful for the recommendations made by the CDBG Allocation Committee, City Manager West and staff to support Project Home Trust, which is a guaranteed income pilot program, the first in Maine to provide direct cash assistance to low-income, mother-led households to prevent, to prevent the financial crisis and extreme stress that results when mothers lose benefits such as general assistance, TANF and SNAP. Project Home Trust is based on a five-year successful guaranteed income program that has demonstrated significant improvements in the participants' ability to pay bills on time by 50, 56% to have enough money for food by 17%, to have an emergency savings by 48% and to have health insurance by 25%. Project Home Trust was designed by project home mothers based on their experience with homelessness and housing insecurity and essential needs programs. And it will be led by Peace Muteti, a former project home mother. I ask you all for your support for this innovative program and I thank you for your service.
Thank you very much for your comment and for being with us this evening. Is there any other public comment this evening? Okay, I've got a couple of people on Zoom, but nobody in chambers, so we'll focus on Zoom until I see somebody step forward. Go ahead, Andrew Bove.
Good evening, Mayor Snyder and members of the council. My name is Andrew Bove and I'm a social worker at Preble Street. I'm here tonight asking you to support the city manager's recommendations for allocation of the Community Development Block Grant Funds. We are pleased to see her recommendation for our emergency food programs, as well as many of our trusted partners and homeless services. Preble Street values our longstanding partnership with the city of Portland to help food insecure Portlanders and people experiencing homelessness. And this funding is critical to our ability to continue these efforts in our community. Everyone deserves access to healthy nutritious food, and these funds ensure this for people in shelters, sleeping outside, or those staying in hotels. We look forward to continuing our collaborative partnership with the city of Portland and many of the other organizations represented here tonight to ensure that everyone in our community is safe, fed, and well cared for. Thank you.
Thanks for being here with us tonight. And next we go to Jenny Stasio.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Stasio, and I'm the Director of Operations at Through These Doors, which is the Domestic Violence Resource Center in Cumberland County. I want to thank the city council for funding our project, the CDBG grant last year to bring domestic violence services to the Bayside neighborhood and to the committee and the city manager this year for recommending continuation funding. Our project to date has served one hundred and nine survivors of abuse. These survivors were provided with behavioral health services, emergency services to prevent homelessness, food assistance, housing startup services, and emergency shelter services. We found that the survivors of domestic violence accessing our community-based services in the Bayside neighborhood are among the most vulnerable that we serve. These survivors are experiencing a culmination of extreme poverty, homelessness, violence, mental health concerns, and substance use disorders. The services provided through this program are reaching survivors of abuse that we otherwise may not reach due to barriers to accessing services. By bringing our services and supports to the people most in need, we are helping to eliminate barriers to safety. We see many successes in the first year of our project and a resounding need for continued advocacy and support. We thank the committee and the city manager for recognizing this and for advocating for the continuation of our work. Thanks so much.
Thank you too, and thank you for your comment. Anybody else want to step forward in chambers with regard to Resolution seven or on Zoom? Okay, I am going to close the public comment period on Resolution seven. I want to thank everybody who did step forward this evening and just remind others that you have another opportunity to weigh in on this issue that will be before the council on April 10th for consideration. Well, the clerk, so we're heading into unfinished business. We're going to take three orders together. Will the clerk please read Order one forty-seven, one forty-eight? And I ask that we take one fifty-six, which is relevant to these two other orders. I'm suggesting we take that out of order and consider it together. So Orders one forty-seven, forty-eight, and one fifty-six, please.
Order one forty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-three, authorizing general obligation bonds to finance a portion of the city's fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Program in the amount not to exceed seventeen million four hundred and fifty-five thousand, sponsored by the Finance Committee, Mark Dion chair. Order one forty-eight, twenty-two, twenty-three, appropriating bond proceeds and other funds in the amount not to exceed twenty-four million five hundred and thirty thousand for the city's fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Program. And one fifty-six, accepting and appropriating a thirty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy donation from the reconstruction of the baseball court on Great Diamond Island, sponsored by Daniel West, interim city manager.
Thank you. I think that's for basketball. Right, great. Okay, thank you so much. So what we'll do here is we've read all three orders. I'm going to look to Counselor Dion to talk about all three orders. We'll act on them separately. So when we take your public comment, it'll be on any of the three or all, but we'll take our votes separately. So just spelling that out for folks, Counselor Dion, I look to you as the Chair of the Finance Committee to offer some comments here.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief, Madam Mayor. But it's a little bit challenging to be brief with the significance in terms of the issues that a budget addresses, and this is the CIP budget. So I want to begin with just that simple observation. These particular orders deal with allocations that respond to the infrastructure of the city, whether it's equipment, vehicles, tools necessary for our city staff to accomplish the service expectations placed upon them by our residents and those who come to Portland for other reasons as well. So I'd like to bear in mind or at least suggest to you that a CIP budget is how we get the job done. It's not necessarily a programmatic budget where we're looking to move forward a particular social policy initiative. This is the hardware of government. This is what makes sure the sidewalks are walkable and streets are plowed. In that light, I'd like to take a moment to publicly appreciate the efforts of Counselors Travaro and Zaro as members of the committee. Their inside commentary and their own diligence is reflected in these documents and will also be reflected in the overall operating budget as well. I'd like to thank the interim city manager Danielle West and her finance director Brendan O'Connell. This is a voluminous body of data and requests. Almost fifty million dollars were submitted by departments looking to enhance their capacity to serve the citizens of Portland. We were only able to meet about ten point six million dollars of those requests, all of them legitimate for the committee, working with senior staff, department directors, and the executive. We had to cull that list down to something that's manageable in this budget cycle. And another point to make about a CIP budget for those who are here today and those watching from another locale is you want to consider infrastructure investments of this nature as a never-ending cycle. We review and get comfortable with what we call year-one requests and the allocations that flow from that. But frankly, we also look out almost five years as to see where these investments will be realized. I mean, the investment, though minor, probably in the grand scale of expenditures, but significant island residents has to do with recreational facilities. That's an important piece of how they define community. And that was identified a couple of cycles ago. And finally, we've gotten to a place where their position in the prioritization schedule has succeeded in their funding. We're making significant investments in Congress Square, both in terms of the park as well as intersection redesign. We've met a hundred percent of the requests in the school department, having to address their capital needs as well. We're meeting challenges confronting the public library in terms of managing their HVAC issues. None of those are particularly great news stories, but it's actually what keeps the machine of government functioning. And I think the CIP reflects a narrative that isn't always appreciated, that there has been a lot of cooperation between the Board of Education, the co-superintendent's office, the executive in this council, and trying to meet their financial needs so they can meet the mission of serving our children. Consistent with that, as we've made appropriation recommendations in this body of requests to address parks, the resources they present for recreation and mental health for our citizens and their families. We're committed to a long-term investment in the playgrounds that support schools. I don't know, that was the best part of me going to school was rec time. So I'm committed to that strategy for the long haul for children who may think as I do. I'm looking at my notes here, and I have sometimes a tendency of speaking too long. So I'm going to try to limit that. I want you to also appreciate as taxpayers that we spend meetings in the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has private conversations among ourselves as to what those priorities are. The interim city manager has made herself available throughout the process for conversations on specific items and where it fits in her fiscal landscape. Our finance director, I don't believe, has any interest in sleeping because he has provided all the background material that we have needed in order to make an informed decision. This isn't a happenstance agreement to what the city manager has proposed. I think this has been well-informed and well-intentioned action by the committee. And I hope it's ratified this evening by the council. And I'll close with that. Madam Mayor, I sincerely appreciate, and I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of my committee members, the voluntary participation by many members of the council as a whole. It's not incumbent on them to attend our meetings, but many have showed, participated vigorously, made their opinions known, both in terms of what they thought was important for the city as a whole and specifically for their districts. So I want you to understand that what's presented here this evening, this ten point six million, is not the work of three of us, but three of us who received and engaged support and advice from many members of the city organization and among our peers here on the council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor Dion, for that thorough summary of where we are this evening and the work that the Finance Committee has done. And I also want to thank you very much for your leadership as Chair of that committee. So again, I was so enwrapped in what you were saying that I lost my lost my spot on the agenda, but I'm back. We are again at Orders one forty-seven, forty-eight, and one fifty-six. We've heard from our Finance Committee Chair. And at this point, I'm going to be looking for public comment on all three items. So feel free to step forward in chambers, raise your hand on Zoom. We'll toggle back and forth. Again, you can offer comment on the totality of the CIP budget or something specific. We'll start here in chambers with you, Stephen.
Stephen Scharf of Brackett Street in Portland. I'm a bit confused by the counselor's comment that this is a ten million dollar budget plan because it's actually ten million dollars in borrowing. The entire plan is twenty-four million dollars. So his description of his ten million dollar plan is actually incorrect. But the entire plan is twenty-four million dollars. Some of it comes from other sources, and that's why, you know. I have spoken for the last twenty years to the city needing to have a comprehensive committee to review and create a capital improvement plan. It should not be on two staff members and three members of Finance Committee to review a plan and present it to the entire body here. There should be a larger committee reviewing this stuff and coming up with a plan for what the city really needs to be doing and figuring out, is this project really makes sense? Does this project not make sense? You know, is it somebody's wish list who has a little power over here versus here? And so I would recommend the council really adopt that concept, which I believe is in the city ordinance and embedded in the city ordinance. Some specific things on the plan that detail Congress Square redesign is listed as seven hundred thousand dollars. But there's some other couple hundred thousand dollars thrown in there where it says, oh, the rest of the money is somewhere else. Sort of weird how it was all worded there. They're very complicated, difficult to understand where the money is flowing. I would like to get a very specific, before you approve this tonight, I would like to get a very specific outline of what we are spending to rebuild the entire intersection of Congress Square and the park. So this references Congress Square, but is this seven hundred for the park or is it for the entire intersection? And I think it's very important considering the problems the city went through last summer with the contractor who is absolutely incompetent, and this city should never hire that contractor again.
Thirty-second warning.
The other issue, things I just wanted to point out is there are two items for two hundred thousand dollars for pickleball courts. That's pretty expensive for pickleball courts, and they're just rebuilding other, one hundred and forty thousand of it is converting tennis courts in the pickleball courts. Makes no sense we're spending that much money to do that. Longfellow and Lycet Playgrounds are getting four hundred and fifty thousand and eighty thousand dollars.
That's time, Stephen.
Yeah, just have one minute.
Go ahead.
Those are in, we just put out a bond to rebuild those schools, and part of that bond was supposed to be for the rebuilding of those playgrounds. So I'm not sure why we're bonding, you know, why we're putting them into a separate plan to this additional stuff when it was already in the bond that we did for those schools.
Thank you.
And the last thing I want to speak to is the restroom pump truck. We spent, we spent.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, Stephen.
We spent a ton of money building these restaurant, restrooms around the city, and no one figured out that we'd have to actually pump them out on a regular basis. And now we're spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a pump truck, which has no clue, it provides no information as to how much it's going to cost to run that pump truck.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll hop over to Zoom, Ann Weber. Ann, you'll have to unmute yourself.
My name is Ann Weber. I'm a year-round resident on Great Diamond Island, and I am a member of the City Island Liaison Committee. And I would like to thank our district representative, Anna Traverro, as well as the Finance Committee for bringing the two projects we have in the CIP to this stage of funding. And I ask on behalf of the committee that the full council approve this funding. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in chambers? And if you would like to speak, just go ahead and step forward.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Snyder, City Manager, full council, and the Finance Committee. I'm CJ Opera-Thousand. I'm the Executive Director of the Friends of Congress Square Park. Like to obviously encourage the council to support the CIP funding for the Congress Square redesign. We get well over thirty thousand park visits a year of all sorts of people. It's truly a public space where we build community, not just the space itself, but through our programming. We have hundreds of free events every season. A lot of them, you know, actually encouraging people to get to know each other. So it's very active community-building space and really valuable to the city. But as built, it's not at its best. It's pretty inaccessible as a space. There's quite a lot of walls. It's not as green as it could be, it's not as much greener as it could be. And this redesign would really alleviate a lot of those problems and help us do our work a lot better and build the community much better. Also brought some cards from some folks that use the park with their comments I'd like to share. So the prompt is they support the Congress Square redesign because it's a great space to be with the community. It's provided us with a space to connect and support local artists and makers. It is all about community sharing and joy. We need a space that is for us. The design helps build community, expresses the art community, and will make the space that much more welcoming. And finally, it's a great space to be with the community, and it has provided us with a space to connect and support. Already read that one. Apologies. So on behalf of those folks who use the park and the organization, again, like to encourage the council to support the CIP funding for the Congress Square redesign. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. I appreciate that. And we do have another hand up on Zoom, George Rowe.
George Rowe, Hanover Street. The Great Diamond Island, it's not appropriate to bundle that. There was no notice in the agenda to do that as a combined item. So I'm going to withhold any comments on that. You have gotten a couple of emails from me on this topic. I just want to say that it's been probably the worst process I have ever seen. The city charter specifically requires a five-year plan to be before the city council when they're deliberating on this. And there has been no five-year assessment of anything, either at the Finance Committee level or at this council level tonight. That's a violation of the city charter mandate, and that is actually one of the big things that the Charter Commission did in 2010 was to try and force this council to confront the fact that we have these enormous hundreds of millions of dollars of backlogs of projects and to try and think multi-year, over five years at least, and make those tough decisions. And also realize the, in your face, the opportunity cost of handing your friends candy, which is basically most of what happens in the CIP each year. And I also want to point out that the audit that caused so much attention on the school side was very clear that there is no transparency about the project balances in the CIP funds. There is dozens and dozens of accounts for all these projects that have been built. There is dozens and dozens of accounts for all these projects that have been building up for years. And you're basically right in this budget, robbing Paul to pay Peter to the tune of over $3 million, but you're not telling us what projects were reduced, canceled, or reallocated to allow us to to be able to steal money from prior CIPs to do that. There's no transparency. There's a lot of things that you guys are happy with. I mean, our city manager and our District Five councillor, they they like to golf. Well, we're spending money on the golf course. So of course they're happy with that. But in terms of actually moving policy forward in our city, there's been virtually no justification. And because somebody else got an extra minute, I'm going to ask for an extra minute just to conclude my remarks. But what happened here is on January 31st, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee. There was no public comment. Andrew Zarro wasn't even present for that meeting. That the information for that meeting was published the day before. And then literally a week later, they voted on it with virtually no time for the public to even digest what was going on.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe, you're at three minutes, so if you wouldn't mind wrapping it up at this point, that would be appreciated, thank you.
That is, that is a snow job, okay? And I know that we're now in spring as of like two hours ago, but that's a snow job. And you ought to be ashamed that this is how you're conducting this business.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in chambers who would like to offer comment this evening? And if you, if you're here and you're, just go ahead and stand forward. And I know that you're in line. That would be great. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm David Lacase. I live at 80 High Street. I've been involved with the Congress Square redesign since 2013. When we first met with Jeff Levine, who was the Planning Director at the time, and Caitlin Cameron, the urban designer, Jeff stated that projects such as this take at least 10 years. Those of us newbies to public projects were shocked and said, how could something so simple take 10 years? Caitlin stated that we should not forget that this was a very unique project as the private sector rarely works jointly with the city on a city-owned project. Well, here we are 10 years later. The design and construction drawings actually took over seven years to complete with input from multiple organizations and individuals, including WRT, the Parks Department, the Department of Public Works, the Portland Public Arts Committee, Portland Downtown, the PMA, the Friends of Congress Square Park, with your planning department leading it all. I'm sure they will tell you that organizing and focusing this group was a bit like herding cats. However, last year, the intersection rebuild was started and should be completed this year with the park and PMA Plaza scheduled for summer 2024. The Congress Square Capital Campaign Committee has raised over $1 million in private money and continues to fundraise for the project and Sarah Z Sculpture. This kind of private support for a public project is unprecedented in the city of Portland. I especially would like to thank the City Planning Department and city staff who have invested hundreds of hours working on this project over the last 10 years. I would also like to thank the city council and the city manager for their past and continued support for this amazing project. It is incredibly exciting to see the completed project in sight. Thank you. And as we say, hope to see you in the square.
Thank you very much for your comment. Others in chambers who would like to step forward to speak to any of these three items on the agenda. I don't see any and no more hands up on Zoom, so I'm going to close public comment and come back to the agenda. And like I said, we'll be handling these one at a time. So I'm going to look for a motion from my colleagues to take up order 147 first.
So moved.
Second.
Councillor Zarro, Councillor Dion with a second from Councillor Zarro. And now we will open it up for council discussion. Councillor Rodriguez.
I meant to look around and see if anyone wanted to go first, but I am just, it never really went up. That's all right. I'll kick it off. I guess I'm going to kind of pick up where some of the public comment left us off. Is there a five-year strategic plan for a CMP process? Is that a global five-year plan? Or does each department have their own strategic five-year plan?
There is a five-year plan. Brendan is, Brendan, are you on the, yes, I see him. He's ready to to speak to this issue earlier today. I just wanted, with regard to the comments, we had received some of these comments over the weekend. So we did, as staff, walk through them, have prepared responses, and I did send the link to the council for that five-year plan. We did discuss it with the Finance Committee as we always do. And what's in front of you tonight is just that one year, which we're asking you to allocate and authorize, which is required. So I think Brendan can speak to that in a little bit more detail. And I would just add for the record that I'm a golfer, but it's pretty terrible and I don't do it regularly. But thank you, Mr. Rowe, for identifying that.
Over to you, Brendan.
I have answers to a couple of different questions that were raised, but I'll start with just the CIP charter requirements. So we do bring the one-year CIP and also the five-year list of requests and available funding to the Finance Committee each year. I will say of the focus, both from the public and from committees typically on that one-year CIP because those are the actions that come in front of the city council. The city council cannot bind future councils in regards to specific spending. But we do try and bring the full picture of all the five-year requests. Some of our departments actually do maintain longer-term plans. I know Parks and Rec does a 10. The School Department had a 20-year facility study done. But we do try and keep the five-year plan updated, and that does get presented to Finance Committee and posted on the city website. I will say the five-year plan is typically brought directly to the committee, and then we do some updates after 6:30 when the audited financials and audited financial information comes out, does get posted around June of the formal report. But that represents the final city council-approved CIP, which may include amendments to the city manager's recommendations, which are brought forward to Finance Committee in the winter. So you can find those reports not only on the Finance Committee page, but there's a capital improvement plan page as well. And the five-year CIP is posted to the backup of the committee pages.
That's helpful.
The other, the other question I have an answer for prepared. I don't know if anyone else wanted to bring it up was the Congress Square total dollars. Want to get that while I'm talking.
Sure, go ahead. Yep. And then we'll head back to you, councillor.
So the total square park project is $3.3 million. The city has provided $1.65 million of funding to date, and the Friends of Congress Square Park have come up with $950,000 to date. And there's a remaining delta of $700,000 in next year's CIP. And this year's CIP is proposing $700,000 for the park. There's also an intersection project, and that is a $2.6 million contract, slightly higher than the original estimate, due in part to some of the delays on the project. And that's why there's an additional $200,000 in this year's capital improvement plan for that intersection to get us to the $2.6 million total with $1 million funded via the State Department of Transportation. So only 1.6 local.
Thank you very much, Brendan, for that. And we're back to you, Councillor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Brendan. Always very helpful. I was aware of the schools long-term, I mean, CIP plan, because I was involved while I was serving when the enrollment of facility studies came out. And, you know, as it was mentioned earlier today, that big improvements for elementary schools was part of a whole bunch of, you know, delayed maintenance and lack of. So I know that there was a lot of effort on their part, and I I knew that the other departments had a similar long-term strategy. But it's good to bring it out here and discuss it. I didn't have anything other specific, but I did want to just express gratitude to Brendan. He helped me by sharing a whole bunch of information about Riverside Golf Course, particularly looking at literally the PNL to see exactly how money flows through that operation. And, you know, and taking into account both benefit expenses and the debt service from the CIP investments that have happened there over time. And with all that into account, it is still a significant revenue-producing or operation for the city, whereas putting back into the operating operation budget almost half a million dollars every year. And again, it's, it's the improvements that we're putting into the facility are actually going to help facilitate even more of that revenue-producing because it's going to help operations as well. So I totally see how that, you know, could be perceived by the community as, you know, us spending money on a golf course. I think that nothing looks, nothing sounds more privileged than that. But when I look at how it returns money to our operating budget, that is deeply in need of more revenue sources. I see as that's a, you know, an investment worth making, and it has been over the years. For the record, I only go out into the Riverside Golf Course to go sledding with my kid. My kid's 14, so that doesn't even happen anymore. So I don't even use the facility. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other questions, discussion from the councillor, Councillor Dion?
Thank you. I I'm overjoyed at the thought that somebody would put the words golf and my name in the same sentence. I labor what a fantasy that one day, when I get to the course, they'll ask me not to leave. They have a job for me specifically trying to prove to the rest of the world that I'm as great as I think I am in my mind. So it's likely that'll never happen, but it's a wonderful dream. I only wanted the microphone for a moment, Madam Mayor, because I do want to respond to Mr. Scharf. I want to thank him for correcting the record. Maybe he'll agree with me or not, but in my mind, throughout the CIP, I focus on how much we have to borrow because in my mind, it's how much do we get to pay back? So the number I referred to as the CIP budget was incorrectly stated by myself. And I just want to put that out there. Another piece of evidence that I'm human. But thank you, Stephen, for correcting the record for those that were watching because I have confidence in the conversations I've had through the process with the manager's office, as well as our finance director, that there was adequate funds from other sources that would underwrite the expenses that are outlined in the CIP budget. But to me, the CIP bonding process is akin to using a government's equivalent of a credit card. So that's something I try to pay attention to because most credit cards that I've met demand payment at some time. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Scharf.
Thank you, Councillor Dion. Other discussion from the council? I'm going to be happy to support these orders this this evening. And I did want to just circle back and say that the five-year plan is something that's required in our charter. And I think it's something that we're all very mindful of. And so we get that opportunity to look at the five-year plan and then recognize that each year is calibrated based on how needs get prioritized over the course of any given year. And that can happen because an HVAC system goes down or any number of systems fail. Or we've made a decision to, you know, increase investments in sidewalk plowing capacity. So I think the five-year plan is really important. It's the place where we can flag things. And being nimble in the annual review of the CIP, of course, is critical as well. And so, so just wanted to say that I have, I have every confidence that we're all very aware of that. And kind of bugging the manager all year long about what's coming up, is this going to be able to be realized this coming year? If not, why? So, you know, the more discussion, the better throughout the year. It's not, the needs in a city like Portland don't get looked at once, and then we turn our attention away for the next 11 months or 10 months. We contemplate them all the time and try to, try to balance it as well. Because it is kind of the workhorse investments. Some of them are just, we have to make them. And others of them may be investments in park facilities and recreation. And and those are important too, to a community. So I did also, I just wanted to follow up on the Congress Square question. I know it's something that is valued by our community. And we've made significant investment in this, this, both the park and the intersection. And so as folks in the community have asked me about that and the city's commitment, it's true that we, you know, we've made, as was mentioned before by our Finance Director, we've made significant investments both as a city but also as a friends group, which is such an incredible value that we've got in the city of Portland when people come to our parks and fundraise and do work to support those spaces that are used for so many things. So thank you to those of you who are here tonight, who I know work really hard to bring assets to bear. Brendan, just a clarifying question for me. There's 700,000 in the order that we're looking at tonight for the Congress Square redesign. In your explanation a little bit earlier, were you saying that we would see that number again next year? Or when you said next year, did you mean FY '24?
So there's another $700,000 in our five-year CIP in next year's CIP budget.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
We don't guarantee future funding, but
No.
because we've committed so much to data, that's likely going to be in the list of recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted clarification there for future councils and and that recognition that the the long-term planning that's been done, as was mentioned before, the 10-year plan and working together is, you know, it does stretch over time and over years. So that's all for my questions. Other discussion or questions from councillors? Councillor Phillips?
I was really trying not to bring this up tonight because it just, well, wouldn't you hear it? I'm really concerned about the clock at Congress Square Park. Isn't that the park that we're talking about? And I mean, I, it seems silly, but for me, being from Portland and having the the, what is it called, the railroad, you know, the building on St. John Street, having that be demolished and not having that in our history is something, seriously, I don't struggle with it every day. But I do think about it because it could have been a serious monument. And we, we tore that down. And so now I'm in total support of the Congress Square Park and what we need to do to revitalize it. But I don't want us to just take this clock and put it somewhere because we don't know where else to put it. Because that, to me, is also part of Congress Square Park. And I just wasn't going to bring it up because it doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal because it's just a clock. But for me, being from Portland, it really does have some significance for me in the city. So I don't know what we can do with the clock. I know that I trust the Friends of Congress Square Park to work with the developer to figure out where it goes or whatever. And I just, I just don't want us to put it somewhere and leave it. Because it does hold some significance and history, some serious history in the city.
Thank you for your comment.
I was just going to speak to that, Councillor Phillips. That's very much on staff's mind. I know Kathy Alves, our Facilities Director, is very focused on that. And so we've been talking about ways in which to make sure that that's preserved and where to put that. So it's very much on our radar screen. So I appreciate that comment.
Okay. Any other discussion on order 147, which is before the council for a vote? Councillor Fornier?
Thank you. Just a quick question for Brendan and also a lot of gratitude to my colleagues. I'm no longer on the Finance Committee. I've moved over to Health and Human Services and Public Safety, but it is a ton of work. So thank you so much for showing up and doing that. Just relative to the Congress Square Park, I I would be remiss if I didn't say something because I just keep hearing these numbers. And number one, I'm wondering, have we spent this much on any of the other parks in our city? This is a very specific square in the middle of the city. And I'm thinking we've had so many different discussions about equity in parks. And now we're spending millions of dollars on one park when we've been fighting about getting parks in other spaces. And so my question, and I don't know if Brendan has this for this evening, but have we spent this much on any other park? And knowing that there's still another $700,000 to go. And when we just had our our budget meeting last week and we're talking about struggling in so many other areas, it just, for me, it's very hard to just not say anything when we are saying we're committed to equity, we're committed to housing, we're committed to health and public health for our community. This just does not feel like an equitable investment to me. So I appreciate that there has been a ton of engagement with the community to try and get these funds to make this happen that doesn't, to me, mean that we, we should be on the hook for the rest of it. And so I'll, I'll leave it with that, but that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Brendan, can you offer any insights there?
So in recent history, we have not funded parks, any specific park at that level. I think, you know, when you look at some of the larger parks where there's multiple things like ball fields, a playground, tennis courts, we might be approaching that over a much longer period of time, but certainly nowhere close to that level of investment at one park in a single or even over a few CIP years.
Thank you. Councillor Ali.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff and everybody's comments. I just want to say a few things. I wasn't going to say anything. But I don't know if that will be helpful to someone to comment my colleague made about equitable. I think on to recently, I walk everywhere and sometimes I take the bus or Counselor Rodriguez gives me a ride. But I think in all the parks that we have in Portland, I think with the suction of the A, the East and Waterfront, the Congress Square Park is a place that I've seen many different people from different parts of the city of Portland. I've gone to, even though I don't know how to dance, I've gone to Latinx dance there. I've been there with immigrant groups. I've been there on Juneteenth. I've been there for several things. One of the young people that I work with who have moved on, he went to college to learn how to make movies. His first movie festival was at the park. I think he called it a movie at the park. So I think it's a very valuable part of our city where people from different backgrounds gather. So I appreciate those who put the work in. And Counselor, thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Counselor Ali. Any other discussion before we act? Counselor Dion?
I totally respect Counselor Fornier's assertions and descriptions of her concern. I smile meekly at Counselor Phillips' notion that, of course, she's from Portland, which must make me from away. I arrived here in 1972. And for those of us here or watching, Congress Square was the center of all the disarray and disorder of the city. So I, for one, have sat back and watched a decades evolution of that space to where I think one day it'll be known as an anchor point for Portland, as a hub for how we define ourselves as a community. And then on a more practical level, I just want to get it done. I want to get money allocated so that we see it done. And the critique that we receive from the public today about the contractor and otherwise, I'm not going to dispute that. I think that's more factual than I'd like to embrace. But the bottom line is, sometimes we just need to get it done. And that's why I endorsed it in my role on this committee. And I hope to see it through with the appropriate votes this evening and in the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Dion. And I think that, you know, as my, I asked my question because I wanted to just be clear, what are we doing tonight? What may come before a future council? So we do have one, one action on that. Well, we have, we have the whole body of work before us tonight. So Counselor Travarro, I'm sorry if I've left you hanging. Sometimes I am not as focused on Zoom as I, as I should be, but there you are.
Oh, you haven't. I just raised my hand a couple of seconds ago. So, thank you. I just wanted to briefly weigh in. I think Counselor Dion gave a thorough introduction to this item in the beginning. And so I just wanted to kind of echo those sentiments and that I will be supporting it in whole this evening. I think that staff, as they always do, has done a fantastic job this year in going through all the needs and being able to put together a list of what we can meet this year and what will best serve our community. Oh, my, he's doing that funky thing again. It was doing that the other night. So I'm just going to stop my video. But I also wanted to say with regard to Congress Square, I said this during the Finance Committee discussions. I lived up there for a period of time. I think I moved there in late 2007. And so I kind of followed this from, you know, many, you know, that long ago. And there were early designs for the park even before the design that we currently have. There was a contest at one point. And, you know, the idea was that at the time it was an underutilized public space. And the thought was that it was underutilized because of its recessed design. And so there was a need to kind of bring it back to life and have it be a space for people in that area to come. And people were very excited about it. And it was one of those many things that got put out there to the public and just never really materialized. So I am excited that after all this time, it finally is coming to fruition. And I do see it as, as value added to a diverse, socioeconomically diverse community that lives up there. There are several dense, low-income housing buildings in that area. And this offers a public space just steps outside of their door. So I am excited. I do understand the concerns raised just about the current kind of large sum of money all allocated in one place. But at the same time for this, I am really excited to see it go forward. So I'll be supporting that as well as the entire package tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion before we move to a vote on Order 147? I think we're ready to go ahead and do that. Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Counselor Travarro?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder? Yes. Order 147 passes unanimously. And next, I'm looking for a motion to approve Order 148.
So moved.
Counselor Dion with a second from Counselor Rodriguez. Is there any council discussion on Order 148? Okay, I don't see any. We'll go ahead and vote. Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Counselor Travarro?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder? Yes. Order 148 also passes unanimously. And lastly, in this package of three, I'm looking for a motion to approve Order 156.
We'll move.
Counselor Rodriguez with a second from Counselor Fornier. Any discussion on Order 156? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ali? Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Counselor Travarro?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder? Yes. Order 156 passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. And so many thanks to city staff, our interim city manager and Director of Finance in particular, but I know all levels of staff and across all departments are working on this. So many, many thanks to City of Portland staff to help get us here tonight. Will the clerk please read Order 149?
Order 149, 2223 Amendment to Zoning Map Regarding IMB-B Industrial Moderate Impact on Industrial Way, sponsored by the Planning Board, Maggie Stanley, Chair.
Great. And I think we've got the Chair of the Planning Board here with us. Maggie Stanley, do you want to offer some comments heading into this order this evening?
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, good evening. I'm pleased to present that on January 24th, 2023, the Planning Board voted six to one. Silk was opposed to recommend the City Council adoption of 50 industrial way. LLC's proposed zoning map amendment that would change 50 industrial way and eight adjacent parcels from an IM industrial moderate impact zone to an IMB industrial moderate impact zone. Yep. In its review of the application, the Planning Board found that the zoning map amendment to the IMB to be consistent with many of the shared goals and objectives expressed in the comprehensive plan, including promoting an economic climate that increases job opportunities and economic well-being, valuing and nurturing Portland-based businesses and supporting industries with high growth slash high value potential, creating an economic prosperity by growing Portland's tax and employment base, and supporting economic vitality by ensuring the efficient movement of goods, services, and people. The board felt that the IMB is an appropriate zone for the subject area and would add appropriate density and bulk to lots that are currently built out with industrial buildings, allowing for future expansions or enlargements of existing businesses. Over the course of the review, the board requested that planning staff consider expanding the IMB zone to encompass more lots than originally proposed. However, after staff analysis and further board deliberation concerning the existing built contacts, impervious surface ratios, and geography of the Dole Brook urban impaired stream watershed, the board ultimately agreed that the IMB zone should be expanded to encompass adjacent smaller, more intensely developed lots and to exclude the larger lots, which could still be, which could still expand on the existing IM zone. In conclusion, the Planning Board voted six one to recommend the City Council adoption of 50 industrial way LLC's proposed zoning map amendment. Thank you. And I think Christine Germano and Kevin Craft are also here.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So all three of you are here for questions that may arise. But at this moment, with that summary presentation offered from the Chair of the Planning Board, I'd like to see if there's any public comment on Order 149. Okay, I don't see anybody stepping forward in chambers, but I do have a few hands up on Zoom. So we'll first go to Kylie Mason.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members and city staff. My name is Kylie Mason from Spago Technics. I represent the Alleghash application that, that began this process. I just wanted to state that we've been very appreciative of working with the city staff. They've been phenomenal to work with in advancing the application. Additionally, our time with the Planning Board was very productive. We really appreciate their support. This approval for the amendment will enable Alleghash and other landowners to improve their developments for the next decade at least. And it's a very important expansion potential for Alleghash and strengthens their ties with the community in Portland. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone in chambers want to step forward to offer a comment on this Order 149? Seeing none, I'll head back to Zoom. Sean Diffley?
Good evening, Mayor Snyder, City Council and members of city staff. My name is Sean Diffie. I'm the Engineer and Director at Alleghash Brewing Company. I'd like to back up Kylie's comments and just offer a quick word of appreciation to the Planning Board and city planning staff for helping to get this amendment put forward here today. As Kylie mentioned, the passing of this amendment will allow us at Alleghash to continue to grow here in the city of Portland. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody in chambers? We'll head over to Zoom again where we've got George Rowe.
George Rowe, West Bayside. Just wanted to highlight, along with my public comment that I submitted, this is exactly why zoning is such a terrible thing in our American society. You all remember that Alleghash played a key role in helping the city purchase some land next to the Riverton Trolley Park. And one of the big reasons that that was never considered for housing in any serious way by our city and our council and our planning department is that it would have required a, probably would have required a rezoning to build enough housing on that site to be feasible for, especially for like an Avesta, you know, affordable housing developer. And, you know, oh my God, rezoning, that's like so hard to do. Like, how can we even consider that? Like, that's like not something that, you know, we're ready to do. But Alleghash, just a few months later, knocks on your door and is like, hey, I need to rezone this, you know, this factory where we make our beer, even though we're moving to Scarborough and our flagship's going to be over there, we still definitely don't want to move our manufacturing right away. So you're like, okay, let's do it. And so you do it. And that's it. That's it. And the problem is you have to like cover your tracks. So instead of it being a spot zoning, you have to throw in a few other neighboring properties. So it doesn't look like you're just doing a special favor for Alleghash. So, but then you get called on that. And so you're embarrassed. So you add a couple of extra ones. But then you realize that this is supposed to be like a special area of like wetlands, you know, protection because of the Bresom Scott River in Dole Brook. So then you make sure that a lot of small industrial properties, literally just like a few doors down, don't get the same benefit that Alleghash does because you're supposedly worried about wetlands. Well, long story short, this is exactly how zoning, especially exclusionary zoning in America works. And you guys do it. You're the ones who make, you grease the wheels. You're the ones who actually make this happen. And the powerful get what they need, even if it's kind of expensive and annoying and it takes longer than it should. But
Thirty-second warning.
Everybody else who doesn't have the money, doesn't have the power, doesn't have the connections, they get shut out. They sleep on a tent on a sidewalk or in a public park before the police come and kick them out. They move to Wyndham. They move to Florida. If they don't get a lottery ticket through the subsidized housing waitlist, they just go somewhere else. Some of them even go to Canada. That's America. And you guys are the ones guarding the system.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment on Order 149? Okay, I don't see any. So I'll close public comment. I'm going to come back to the council for a motion, please.
Move passage. Second.
Counselor Fornier with a second from Counselor Zaro. And I would like to remind folks that we do have resources. We have people here from both the Planning Committee and the Planning Board. So if there's any questions during council discussion, we definitely have the opportunity to have questions answered. Any discussion? I don't see any. I think we're ready to go ahead and vote on Order 149. Counselor Fornier? Yes. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Counselor Travarro?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder? Yes. Order 149 passes unanimously. And we will move on in our agenda to the Orders section. Will the clerk please read Order 154?
Order 154, 2223, approving the Home American Rescue Plan Allocation Plan, sponsored by the Housing and Economic Development Committee, Counselor Pious Ali, Chair.
And I'll head over to Counselor Ali, who is the Chair of that committee, for some context here.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is something that the Housing Committee does once every year. And Mary might be somewhere out there on virtually to speak to it.
She's actually right there.
Oh, she's here. Oh, Mary. Over to you, Mary.
Thanks for being here, Mary.
Thank you. Good evening, Counselors. I'm Mary Davis, the Interim Director of the City's Housing and Economic Development Department. Counselor Ali made reference to a program that you're probably familiar with, our home program, which we receive funding from the U.S. Department of Urban Development every year. This is slightly different from that. Through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding was allocated to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for this particular program called Home ARP. Entitlement jurisdictions like the city of Portland were, were given an allocation of this funding. And there were very specific rules qualifying populations eligible activities that were associated with this funding. Very different from our usual home program. I would also note that because we are part of the Cumberland County Home Consortium, this funding is available for projects throughout Cumberland County. And we worked very closely with the Cumberland County Community Development Staff to create this plan. As I said, the Home ARP funding is very different from the regular home program. And there were a lot of different requirements as far as outreach and collaboration in order to create the plan that's in front of you. So we had meetings very specifically with social service providers, other interested community members. We participated in outreach meetings that main housing held with the COC, statewide social service providers, housing developers. So there was a very robust outreach program for creating this plan. The city received just under 3.6 million. I should stop saying city. The Cumberland County Home Consortium received just under 3.6 million in collaboration with the county. We are recommending that the funding not use the allocation formula that was within our home program, but that we make this funding available countywide so that we can hopefully facilitate greater impacts. Very specific populations are eligible for this funding. The funding is to be used to address the need for homelessness assistance and supportive services. It can be used in a variety of different ways to develop and support of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, provision of supportive services, and acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter units. The qualifying individual The qualifying individuals or families that are eligible for this assistance are homeless, as is defined under the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. Families or individuals at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, and parts and/or are part of other populations where providing supportive services or assistance would prevent a family's homelessness or would serve those with the greatest risk of housing instability. In addition, the last qualifying population is veterans and families that include a veteran. So in our plan, we took those four eligible areas or types of activities. And we made some recommendations about what we thought, based on the community input that we received, what would be the best use of those funds. So the plan before you is recommending funding in the supportive service, supportive services category of 763,755. Acquisition and development of non-congregate shelters for 250,000 and development of affordable rental housing at just over $2 million. Again, the plan isn't recommending specific projects. It's recommending funding in these categories. And the Cumberland County Commissioners have approved the plan. Once it's approved here at the city, it'll be submitted to HUD. Once HUD approves the plan, we intend to release requests for proposals for the use of the funding. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that, that summary, Mary. It's really thorough. We appreciate you being here. Before I go to the council for discussion and questions, I'd like to take public comment on Order 154. Anybody in chambers who would like to step forward? And I think George, I see George Rowe on Zoom. It might be his third. Great. Okay, just wanted to make sure that you knew, George, but go ahead.
George Rowe, West Bayside. Just wanted to highlight, you know, two thirds of this money is likely to go towards potential housing development opportunities. And just wanted to make it clear that, you know, there's very few actual places where this kind of development can occur in Cumberland County. You know, community after community have really shut down, either through a short-term moratorium or, you know, some, some version of, of basically zoning out poor people. They have made it virtually impossible for this money to really be put to much good use in the short term. And that is, you know, that's the reality. So, you know, it's a shame that, I mean, if you actually scroll through this and if somebody actually took the time to actually open the backup material, there's just an enormously long, you know, bureaucratic slug of paper, exhaustively talking about all of the work. And it was busy work that went into creating this quote unquote "plan". And it really comes down to, at the end of the day, whether middle-class and mostly upper-middle-class people in Cumberland County are going to allow more neighbors near them. And the answer is no. You've shown, this council has shown it, I mean, supposedly the most diverse, most progressive city council in, in the city's history. And you're deathly afraid of making any move that upsets the neighbors, whether it's a music festival or a shelter or affordable housing, you know, complex. We literally are scheduling a quote unquote "celebration" for the opening of a 208-bed homeless shelter on the outskirts of our city next to a suburban propane distribution tank farm, next to a scrap metal yard, next to a waste management dumpster facility, next to a tree-cutting chipping yard. That's not a celebration. That's a complete and total failure.
Thirty second warning.
Of everything that people in this city claim to be champions of. It's exclusion. It's, I don't care who you are, just don't get close to me and you're not allowed to live near me if I think you're going to bother me. And the solution is, right now, to hand over most of Bayside to Port Properties, which is fine. Well, Bayside's always been welcoming to housing.
Thank you for your comment, George.
But that's where we're at.
Any other public comment on Order 154? Okay, oops. Not on Zoom either. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Come back to the council for a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Councillor Rodriguez with a second from, I believe it was Councillor Zaro. I hope I got that right. Okay. And now we have the opportunity to have some council discussion. If there are any questions, Director Davis is here. Any questions, comments, discussion? I will happily be supporting this this evening. I think that the, it is a long memo in the, in the backup. I think it's 40 some pages. But lots of times that's what's required when there's government that, not only city government, but working together with county government in response to a federal program. So thank you for that, that work and making our way through there is really informative. And I would say that the Home, the Home American Rescue Plan Allocation Plan aligns perfectly with the council's goals. And it's not just, as Mary said, it's not just focused on the city of Portland. It's focused on Cumberland County. And I think that's, that's good and meaningful work when we think about making investments in, in housing in response to homelessness. So happy to support this tonight. I see no hands up from my colleagues. So we'll go ahead and vote.
Councillor Fornier?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Dion?
Yes.
Councillor Ali?
Yes.
Councillor Zaro?
Yes.
Councillor Trabarro?
Yes.
Councillor Pelletier?
Yes.
Councillor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Order 154 passes unanimously. We're going to take Order 155, but I did want to just note that we're going to take a little bit of a break after 155 and before we head into the public hearing period associated with Order 157. And the work that that will entail, I just want to give, we didn't have any turnaround time between executive session and the council meeting. So I want to give people a chance to stretch their legs after this and then we'll come back. So will the clerk please read Order 155?
Order 155, 2223, approving the rules of the rent board sponsored by Daniel West, interim city manager.
Thank you. And I'll go to you, Danielle.
I'm not sure if the Chair Elliott Simpson is available. Oh, there he is. I didn't know if you had some comments you wanted to provide on these rules specifically prior to a public comment.
Yeah, so we prepared rules, the new ordinance that was passed in November 2022, required city council approval of some of our rules, procedures and forms that are used. So that's what is before the council this evening. The rules of the rent board, which is how we, the board operates. The new maintenance and net operating income worksheet, which is the basis of the new ordinance for evaluating rent increases. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I would just note also that we're requesting that this be passed as an emergency. That's due to the fact that these need to be passed immediately so that they can go into effect prior to, I think it's, the deadline's coming right up. What is it, Michael? You?
March.
Yeah, March. So we need to get that in place as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair Simpson, for being here with us this evening. We appreciate you being available for questions. And so before I look to the council for a motion and some discussion here, we'll see if there's any public comment on Order 155 in front of the council this evening.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Buddy Moore. I live at 95 Welch Street. I just want to speak in favor of the maintenance of net operating income methodology that the rent board is proposing. It is the gold standard for determining a fair return for landlords under almost every rent stabilization ordinance in the country. And the board has worked really hard on this. And I just wanted to offer my support for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll go to Matt Walker, who's on Zoom.
Hello, I'm Matt Walker. I live at 655 Congress Street. I also just want to say that I think the MNOI is a good thing for the rent board to be doing. So I'm really glad that this is getting done. And I want to thank the city manager for getting this through as an emergency order on time. And just the last thing I want to say is thanks to the rent board. It's a ton of work. And I see all the effort you all put into it. And I recognize it and appreciate you. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else who would like to speak to Order 155? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment on Order 155 and come back to the council for a motion, please.
Move to pass. It's an emergency.
Second.
Well done, Councillor Rodriguez. I appreciate the inclusive language with the emergency passage. And Councillor Zaro with the second. Is there any discussion? Before I say, oh, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. Hold on. Let's go back. Thank you. Thank you. Well done. Any discussion from the council on Order 155? Councillor Dion?
Thank you. I appreciate the work the rent board did. Thank you. I actually read the rules. I read the ordinance more than once over the weekend. And then I took a look at the MNOI. I guess there's a future for accountants and lawyers. Okay, it's pretty detailed. And I think it may be an appropriate instrument for assessing what some would refer to as corporate landlords. I think they should be subjected to that kind of scrutiny. I don't have a problem with that. But my only comment to the board is consideration, much like the IRS did. You know, there was the old 1040. Then they developed the 1040 easy that people could understand. I mean, I read this over a couple of times because I wasn't really clear what was being asked of me. So I think for landlords who own a couple of buildings, they're not really big business. They've made investments over a couple of decades. This could be pretty challenging. All right, so I, I'm going to vote for it so we can move the process along so that you can exercise your responsibilities as a rent board. But sincerely, trust me, there are folks that are going to be intimidated by that instrument. And they might, it might not be so for those where landlords actually have legal counsel on retainer. That'll just be a billable experience for them. But for a loss of, a lot of land persons that I know, especially if they're getting on in their years, this is going to be really tough. So I just wanted to put that on the record. It's, it's real important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dion. I think Chair Simpson, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward, I was, you know, I'm looking at what's in our packet and it's a significant amount of information that you're asking for from landlords. So what degree of help do you have to offer people who might have, you know, a few units and would need help filling out this form?
I think the council's concern is one that I have expressed and I think other members of the board have expressed with the way that the ordinance was written. The maintenance and net operating income refers to a pretty specific methodology. And, you know, based on conversations we've had with the Corporation Council's office, this seems to be, when you look at a lot of other cities, there are no simplified versions that don't take into consideration so many factors. Based on the research I've done, there are cities that their ordinances are written that allow for certain simplifications for small landlords or for increases under a certain percentage. Unfortunately, with the way that this new ordinance is written, we don't believe that we have that flexibility to alter that maintenance and net operating income methodology that is called for in the ordinance. If, so, I mean, I personally would support having it simplified, but I think just giving, given the way that the ordinance is written, our hands are somewhat tied there. In regard to help, the Housing Safety Office is doing the best that they can to support the rent board in reviewing these applications. I'm hoping that after we get a few, that maybe we can revise the application to still be in compliance with the ordinance, but simplify it as much as possible. One of the well-known downsides of the maintenance and operating income methodology is the complexity and time-consuming nature of it. And to say that it is a, you know, necessitates accountants and lawyers is very much the case in a lot of localities that have these sorts of methodologies in place. So, yeah, it's not a simple methodology.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Councillor Dion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your candor in assessing that instrument. And I would like to pose a question to Corporation Council. Are we to understand that the Chair's analysis of our inability to modify that form is correct?
The, the language in the new, the recent changes to the, to the rent control ordinance do have pretty specific requirements about this particular form of analysis, the MNOI analysis. And they also state that the board has to adopt rules that are, as, as the Chair said, that are essentially, I'm just looking at the language, similar to what other towns have done that have similar ordinances. They haven't tried to reinvent the wheel here. But that, that form was reviewed and approved by the, by the board. It's consistent with the language in the new ordinance, which was approved at the, by referendum last fall. And it unfortunately says what it says. Whether or not there's some flexibility down the road to create a simpler form, I don't know that, that it, I don't know that it's going to simplify the methodology. The form is complicated because the methodology is complicated. And I think that, I think that the form, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chair, but I don't, you guys didn't create this from scratch. It was a form borrowed from another jurisdiction, which is what the, which is what the language in the new ordinance advises the board to do.
And Michael, you, this is subject to the five-year rule, right? So the council couldn't amend that ordinance provision to change the requirement?
Correct. It's subject to the five-year rule and, yeah, won't, can't be changed unless, unless it was to go back out for a vote.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And the reason I asked and his, his explanation is very clear. When I first started reading this, I said, I'm going to go to the council and move for division. I was going to tear off the form rule and see if we could modify it because I think there's a whole class of landlords that are ill-served by this, or at least could be intimidated by doing it correctly, that I thought it was worth exploring. But the more that I read it, I came to a conclusion, I have to live with it. That's why I was posing it to the Chair as to whether or not he could take action with his body to at least provide an alternative form that would arrive at somewhat similar outcomes in terms of reliability to assess what, I guess, the base rent would be and other such factors.
I, I mean, I guess I would say at, you know, at some point down the road, I know that the, you know, the board is under significant time constraints to get these rules done. There wasn't a lot of time between the effective date of the, of the new, the new ordinance and when these rules had to be in place. Whether or not there's some ability to come back and get approval for, you know, another form in the future, as long as it's consistent with the language in the, in the ordinance, that would be fine. But changing the ordinance itself, as the city manager said, is, would require not only action by, by the council, but also a, a vote of the, or an election of the voters.
Thank you, Corporation Council. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, I want to just kind of speak a little bit of what Councillor Dion just said. You know, from 10, from the 1040 to 1040 easy. And then if I could add another layer, then there's TurboTax, right? Which completely changes the way that questions are framed and is supposed to be helpful. But it's really not. Especially if you're running a business and you have difficulty in figuring out your expenses. So I do believe that efforts to simplify complex applications such as tax preparation documents is not necessarily as effective as, as, as we think it is. And I'm saying that just from my experience of when I've had to file my taxes and as I include my, my overhead expenses and cost of goods sold for my business. I've, you know, I've, I prefer to go straight to my Schedule C form instead of going to TurboTax. It's just, the government has actually made that simpler. It's, it's just the government has actually made that simpler. So to speak to the application itself, I agree that it, it seems to be asking for a significant amount of information. However, as with any business, having a solid understanding of how your operating expenses are breaking down is ultimately how you're going to stay in business. So businesses that tend to not do well, when we look at their numbers, often we see a poor calculation of operating expenses, which makes them then have to artificially or, you know, inflate their overall prices because they're trying to chase this like net profit that, you know, it's never there because they're just not calculating their operating expenses correctly. So asking somebody who is making housing a business, or there's their business, to have accurate accounting of their operating expenses is actually a way to support them as, as an entrepreneur. Right? Because you do need to have accurate accounting of all your expenses. So as, 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 as anybody that's, you know, running their own, their own business or doing their own accounting, you know, I would expect them to have accuracy in their, in their operating expenses regardless. But I, I, I don't want to pretend that this application is simple and all you have to do is plug in your P and L numbers here. So I just wanted to say that, that I, while cumbersome, I do think that it is appropriate and it's, it's beneficial to the landlords themselves just to have accurate information on their operation. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a question for you, Chair Simpson. I think on the heels of that, so I appreciate that, that commentary that, you know, the more information you have, the more organized the information is, the better poised a business is to succeed. And we have lots of folks who own properties in Portland with many, many units. But I'm wondering about the person who might own a two-unit who works full-time, maybe has a family, but has these two units of housing that they rent out. So it's not their business per se. It, it is, is of course a business, but it's sort of in, in addition to their, you know, their work and their life. And I'm just wondering to the, to the extent that you have a sense of this, can you talk at all about the different kind of landlords that we have and how this interface works for the smaller ones?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Madam Mayor. I I think you bring up a concern that I myself and others on the board have expressed with the ordinance. I, my reading of the ordinance is I don't see a way to simplify it too much, but I think that there are a number of, you know, smaller landlords in Portland who may only have a few units who would wish to utilize this process. One thing I will state is that not all, the only landlords are going to be using this form are the ones who are trying to achieve a rental increase that is above the automatically allowable. So we don't really have a prediction for how many we'll see, but if it's the historic, you know, trends of the board, we get a few per month. So if more would like to use this, then yes, and smaller landlords could. You know, it is asking for a lot of information. One thing I will say is that the board works a lot with the Housing Safety Office, who ends up being on the hook for answering a lot of the questions from landlords and they can provide feedback to the board on things that can be done to improve the form. So and I'll continue to work with the Corporation Council's office on any, you know, revisions that we can make that are still compliant with the ordinance after we get some experience with how this will work for Portland. One of the last things that I'll say is that a lot of the cities that have these maintenance of maintenance and net operating income methodologies have staff, professional staff that are dedicated to these sort of things. In Portland, this entire infrastructure is based on volunteers. So it certainly, that could be an area of difficulty for applicants, but I won't get too much into that. But I think hopefully that addresses some of your concerns.
That helps. Thank you. Other questions, discussion from the council before we move to a vote here? I want, I want to say thank you to, to you and to others who serve on the rent board in that volunteer capacity. We know that you're putting in a lot of time and bringing your own context and personal expertise to the table. So I think we hear you that there's a volunteer role and then there's a paid professional staff role. And I want to acknowledge how much work you all are doing as volunteers. Thank you. And I think we're ready to go ahead and vote on these, to, to pass these as an emergency order 155. Counselor Fornier? Yes. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Dionne?
Yes.
Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Zaro?
Yes.
Counselor Travarro?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder? Yes. Order 155 passes unanimously. Thank you again for being here. And as mentioned, we're going to take a little bit of a break before we head into Order 157 so that people can do whatever you need to do. So let's be, meet back here in 15 minutes. It is now 7:41. So I will see you at 7:56. And I'm on Zoom. Peter, I'm looking at you. Are we good to go? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are back. We've got attendees. We've got folks in chambers. Thank you for being here. We've got one more item on our agenda this evening, which is Order 157. So we'll head right in there and I'll ask the clerk to start us out by reading that order into the record.
Order 157, 2223, setting an election date on citizen initiative amendment to the Portland City Code regarding an act to approve tenant protection sponsored by Ashley Ray and City Clerk.
Great. Thank you. So I'm going to spell this out a little bit and then we're going to go to public comment. Okay. So we've got a couple of things in our, our agenda backup, backup this evening. We've got a citizen initiative, which is an amendment to an ordinance that we had a public hearing on last week in response to, or the hearing had to do with setting the public hearing date. So tonight, what we will be doing is having a public hearing on the council's work to set an election date for a proposed citizen initiative that has been submitted to the clerk's office. In addition to this citizen initiative, we have an amendment to Order 157 in our backup materials sponsored by both Counselor Phillips and Counselor Travarro. So that serves as an amendment to Order 157. Hope that makes sense. So when we take public comment this evening, we'll be taking public comment on setting an election date for the citizen initiative amendment to the Portland City Code regarding an act to improve tenant protections. And we'll be taking public comment on a proposed competing measure which acts as an amendment to Order 157. I hope that makes sense to folks. The original 147 is setting the election date for the citizen initiative. The amendment to 157 is a possible competing measure that will be teed up for you by Counselor Phillips before we head into our public hearing. So we've got, like I said, we've got folks with us here in chambers, people on Zoom. I just remind people to give us your first and last name, either the, your address or the neighborhood you live in or the organization that you represent. The city clerk will keep your time to three minutes and give you a 30-second warning. We appreciate hearing from you. And lastly, what I'll say here is, in the event that, so we've got the, the order setting an election date on the citizen initiative. In the event that an amendment to Order 157 were to pass, there would also be a third element on the ballot, which would be the none of the above, which we can of course talk about later. But I think everybody's pretty familiar with, with what all that looks like. So with that, I hope I've made that less confusing, not more confusing. I'll go right to my colleague, Counselor Phillips, to offer her amendment to Order 157 and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I see, I, I looked at the citizens initiative and I had some concerns that we weren't really completely looking at tenants, tenants' rights. Because ultimately, our goal here is to look at housing. And it's not just to look at the unhoused. It's not just to look at the homeless, but it's also to look at those folks that are in housing and making sure that those folks are being able to afford to stay in their house or their apartment and making sure that we were being fair to them and, and, and getting them to pay their rent and staying housed. We also have an obligation to landlords. Right? We also have that obligation. This is not just so, it's just not, it's not a one thing. It's both. And so I really tried to take a look at this and I really tried to put a competing measure together with the help of Counselor Travarro and with the help of Corporation Council to something that I think is fair to both. And so in taking a look at this, I, I've talked to folks on the council about this. I've, I've tried to get some support. I've tried to say, is there something else that we should be putting forth? And so I really tried to have this be a competing measure from myself and me with help and with consideration from the council. And I appreciate Counselor Travarro being willing to co-sponsor this with me. Also, basically, I want to put together a competing measure that says a couple of things. One, in simple terms, that we increase the banked rent from 10% to 20%. And if somebody is, if there's a no cause eviction or a voluntary termination that some, that both the landlord and the tenant agree to that, and we get an affidavit from that stating that that was the case. Another one is supply, is the voluntary terms of what it does mean to actually have a no cost eviction or voluntary termination. And the other one is to increase the real, the relocation cost by $2,000 depending on when you leave. So that's what I'm putting forward. I welcome comments and I welcome comments from both the public and from my colleagues on this measure.
Thank you, Counselor. And now we will open it up for public comment. So again, if you're with us in chambers, please feel free to step forward, make a line behind the podium so that I know you're here and you want to speak. Don't wait to stand up. We can keep, keep, keep it rolling and I'll toggle between chambers and Zoom. So I don't see anybody in chambers. I'll go straight to Zoom. Rudina, you're up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Councilor and staff. My name is Rudina Gobizzi. I live in Portland at 25 Clifton Street. My husband and I have owned property in Portland for over 40 years. My husband is born and raised in Portland and I'm an immigrant and I've been living in Portland for a long time. We've both have been worked very hard for every dollar we have. When we first started being landlords, everything was done with a handshake, later on a lease. And the last three years has been very complicated. You'd literally have to be a lawyer in order to keep up with all these legal changes. The lease is not five pages anymore, but 50 pages. Before rent control, we usually did not increase rent to our current tenants. But after they left, we were able to update our property and send a set of rent to market value. The last three years, this has not been possible. We have to increase rent for our current tenants every year. After the lease, after they leave, we won't be able to update our property because we can't recuperate our losses anymore. We worked very hard to collect signatures from our community to place our proposal to address this on the ballot. We spoke to Portland residents and collected it in the end, over 3,000 signatures, actually more if we had more time. Today, I found out that there is a competing proposal that did not require collecting signatures. Not sure what this is. Why are certain council members working with and for Ethan Strimling trying to undermine our efforts with a proposal on the 11th hour? The proposed Act to Improve Rent Control maintains all tenants' protection in the current rent control ordinance approved by Portland voters. The proposal is incredibly narrow in focus and easy to understand by both tenants and housing providers. We have volunteered countless hours to put the risk proposal and the accompanying summary in front of the voters because we believe it is crucial compromise that will help tenants and help Portland. Because without this, we are thinking on selling all our properties important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Please step forward. You can, you can just stand right up to the mic and give us your name.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, councilors and my esteemed community members. My name is Leo Hilton. I live at 3 Salem Street in District 2 and I'm a co-chair of the Maine Democratic Socialists of America. I know we're not speaking to the merits of these proposals this evening, but I just want to say rent control works. In our first two years under rent control in Portland, we, with the enhanced tenant protections, our cities effectively stabilized rent for the first time in decades. It's not perfect, but I think the law's greatest flaws are exhibited in the city's failure to enforce them effectively. The sponsors of this proposal, this ballot question argue that they can fix our rent control measure and ameliorate the housing crisis by allowing landlords to further increase rents. If this act is an act to improve tenant protections, the question for me is, improve them for whom? It's clear to me that this initiative, sponsored by a group of landlords and developers, is a cynical attempt to improve their own ability to enrich themselves. And I think most relevant tonight is their insistence on deception as a key element of their campaign for such. They masquerade as a grassroots group advocating for tenants' rights, calling themselves the Rental Housing Association. And I'd also just like to put forward, what is a rental housing association? The only people providing housing are the, my brothers and sisters in the building trades who are building the buildings that we live in and maintaining those buildings. But in addition to that, they've titled their question in a way that misrepresents its content and included a summary that seems guaranteed to confuse voters as to the actual matter that we're voting on. Last month, I was sick with COVID, went out for my once daily walk, double masked, trying to keep myself away from other people. And I was accosted by a signature collector who continued to badger me even after I told them that I was contagious with COVID. I refused to sign their petition and I was a little bit perplexed that they didn't have any supporting documentation or full language of the measure while they were collecting my signature. This is all to say, I urge the council to do what seems only reasonable in response to this clear attempt to gut an important provision of a law that was adopted overwhelmingly by the people of Portland at two elections with some of the highest turnout we've ever seen, at an election that historically has some very, very low turnout. And what I'd ask the council is that first, you amend the summary language to accurately represent the intent of the question, specifically that it will amend, not improve tenant protections, and to remove the clearly biased language about discouraging no cause evictions and aligning it with other cities. Thank you. And second, I fully support the competing measure sponsored by Councilors Phillips and Travarro. I think that this is important so that Portlanders can use this opportunity at the ballot to vote for something positive, make a positive impact in our city that allows us to build a place we can, all can live in and not just for the people who own the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I do just want to remind folks that what we're taking public comment on tonight is two things. Setting an election date for the citizen initiative. And secondly, the amendment that was offered. So if you could narrow your, your comment to those two things, that would be helpful. Thank you. Next, we'll go to Zoom. Chris Aceto?
Chris Aceto at 12 Pine Street. I wanted to just point out the utter hypocrisy of the idea that when other people, other groups, there's quote associations that the previous speaker spoke about. When the DSA came in with, with their referendum question, nobody from the council tagged an amendment onto, to their amendment questions. But when something, when a citizens initiative is raised from quote a competing group of the DSA, namely landlords, this association, an amendment is hooked onto it. The, the, it, it seems so hypocritical that when a citizens initiative is formed, in this case, that it can't be put on the ballot. It has to be put on the ballot with modifiers set by the council. But when someone else puts one on, yep, you're good to go. And I would like to ask Counselor Phillips directly if she did or did not get this information, this amendment, this idea from the former mayor, third place in the last election, Ethan Strimling. Because that pollutes the whole process. It's like he's running the council from the trailway building. Because if it's, if it's Regina's idea on her own, fabulous. Even though it's hypocritical, but I've, you know.
Mr. Aceto, I'm gonna, I'm just, I was reticent to interrupt the last speaker, but I'm going to interrupt you and I'm going to just make this reminder. Please focus your comment on setting an election date and the decision before the council of whether or not to approve an amendment to Order 157. So again, I really didn't want to interrupt the previous speaker. And I don't love to interrupt speakers, but I'm asking folks to stay as disciplined as you can within the context of public comment. Thank you.
Okay, on my time, I'll be as disciplined as I can. The amendment is tagged on to a referendum question where it was never tagged on to referendum questions in the past. It's, it was never applied to previous citizens initiatives and questions. And part of that amendment is, where did the idea for the amendment come from? So I'm very precise on what I'm speaking about. The amendment is polluted by the idea that the person who's initiating the amendment got that amendment for some, from somebody who initiated.
Thirty second warning.
I've said everything clear. I'm sure people get my point. I don't have to add to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Chambers?
Hello, my name is Zara Kane. I work full time in Portland's food service sector and I live in Westbrook because I cannot afford Portland's rent. I ride the bus. Southern Maine Landlords Association has gotten a makeover recently. Realizing astutely that public sympathy for landlords is in short supply, they have renamed themselves the Rental Housing Alliance of Southern Maine. When put it, when you put it that way, it almost sounds like they might be representing renters. They do not. They tell you they are going to improve tenant protections. They are not. This is an act that extends no protections whatsoever to Portland's tenants. Their message to you is that this will only affect the next tenant. Many of you are renters. Think about your own apartment. Think about that mold around the bathtub lining and the ants that come through the floorboard every May.
Hi there. Sorry, sorry about that. Again, hate to interrupt, but really what we're, so the initiative set forth by landlords that is slated for action tonight by the council to set the election date, that's going to be decided by voters. So the content of that is going to be decided by voters. And so what we're talking about tonight as an action for the council is setting an election date. So that's, we're taking public comment on setting the election date. Again, when, when we talk about the amendment to Order 157, we're talking about the possible inclusion of another viewpoint on the ballot. So if you could please keep your comments focused on what we've published in the agenda for public hearing, I'd really appreciate it.
Right on. The situation for Portland renters is dire as it is. Giving further handouts to the rent, to the landlords of Portland is again, something that will be decided at the ballot box in June. With the and as a resident of Westbrook, I am of course powerless to stop the will of the public. However, supporting Regina, Counselor Pelletier's competing measure is a means by which the residents of Portland can actually advocate for those, their own interests versus being asked to sign away their rights, the mechanisms by which we actually keep the rents down in Portland without any means by which to advocate for themselves at that ballot box. It's going to be a low turnout election in June and we want to give the renters of Portland something positive that they can actually look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Emily Manter on Zoom.
My name is Emily Manter. I live on Cumberland Ave in District 1 in Portland. I'm speaking in support of adding the competing measure. In early 2021, I moved into an apartment in Portland and learned, learned that the landlord had increased the rent 60% between the previous tenant and myself without having made any significant improvements to the unit. As an example, I did a bit of research and I think the oven was from the 80s. So they were not making improvements that they needed to pay for. This was an extremely high rent increase that was not allowed under the rent stabilization ordinance that was in effect at the time. I raised the issue with the landlord and copied the Housing Safety Office and the landlord adjusted the rent to be in compliance. However, when my lease expired, the landlord did pursue a no cause eviction. I imagine they raised the rent at least 50% for the new tenant rather than the 5% allowed under the ordinance. And I imagine they got away with it. My experience is not unusual these days, unfortunately. And it's clear that extreme rent hikes between tenants is something we need to make more difficult and enforceable, not easier. In my eyes, this is an issue of disincentivizing evictions. So I would support having a competing measure on the ballot to give folks more options because I think that this, this measure needs an alternative because it would certainly make things worse. Thank you. I am curious about the competing measures aspects around no cause evictions. I don't quite understand what that piece would do and I'd be curious about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Just another reminder to folks, come on and step forward. If you're in chambers, you don't have to stand back. You can be at the, at the mic, at the ready. Please direct your comments to me. Those are part of the council rules. We don't call out individual councilors. So you can direct your comments to me, but we're really not pulling out individual people's names here. Thank you for familiarity with the council rules and we'll head to our speaker here in chambers.
Hi, my name is Chase Heimbach. I live on Congress Street in District 2. I signed on to this measure because I was lied to by the person collecting signatures. Yeah, so I think that we should probably have a competing measure and change the language. I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jonathan Cully on Zoom.
Yes, hi, thank you, Mayor. Jonathan Cully, owner of Redfern Properties. We develop and own apartments in Portland. You know, first I'll acknowledge what everyone's saying and the council knows. We do have an affordable housing crisis locally, regionally, nationally. That deserves bold solutions, but it's important that there are thoughtful solutions and ideally apolitical. It's a shame that housing policy has become politicized. And I think there's blame to go all around for that. I do think that you should put the, the citizen petition ordinance on as soon as possible. I was part of the effort to create this petition. I think it should go on soon because I will sort of reiterate that the petition does not remove or change any protection for existing tenants. It does address what happens when a tenant voluntarily moves out, allowing for a reset of base rent. My concerns about the competing resolution are largely process oriented. From my understanding, there's no precedent for the council to offer a competing resolution to a petition proposing ordinance changes. I know the Homeless Services Center, there was a competing resolution, but that's a different situation. There was obviously no competing resolution when the DSA proposed rent control in 2020 nor the rent control changes in 2022. And I would say in the past, the council's determined that the voters should decide on the merits of the petition and not muddy the waters or confuse voters with an alternative proposal. And I think that's exactly what this petition, how the completing, competing resolution would do. My reading of the competing resolution is that it's frankly vague and difficult to interpret and will increase the administrative burden on the city. While the citizens initiative will dramatically decrease the administrative burden on the rent, rent board and city staff. Finally, usually when the council makes housing policy, it's been through a thoughtful and deliberative process and it usually starts with staff's research and analysis and then moves to committee for discussions and deliberations before being worthy of consideration by the full council. In this case, it appears that the resolution just surfaced at the very last minute, maybe last week. My understanding is there's been little or no staff input. It certainly didn't originate with staff. And there's no clarity on who wrote the documents and what the specific policy goal is that they were trying to target. So I urge you to reject the competing resolution based on both substance and process. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. In chambers, please.
Hi, thank you all. My name is Stacia Brzezinski. I'm on Deering Street. I strongly support the competing measure and I'm here to speak on that. For myself and the many, many low in income renters in Portland, the search for affordable housing is exhausting, demoralizing, usually unsuccessful. And if you haven't considered this, I'd like you to consider it today entirely unnecessary. I'm speaking now to all in the council as well as the questions authors, if you're present. Housing is not optional. It's not a luxury. Shelter is a basic human need and we should respect that unalterable fact and protect it fiercely. I voluntarily moved out of my apartment last year to move in with my partner. That's wonderful. If the person in my current apartment did the same thing before me, that shouldn't mean that I couldn't live there. So, excuse me. I wish that the fact that housing is a human right was uncontroversial enough to never make it onto a ballot. And from what we know about how signatures were gathered, there's a good chance it shouldn't. At the very least, Portland voters deserve clear, honest language, but also a functional alternative when this enormous part of their lives, of my life, comes to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Over to Zoom, Jamie Clark, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jamie Clark. I live at 60 Brackett Street in District 2. I'm here to speak in support of the competing measure and for the change of the summary language to the proposed question. As someone who works in the city at a local grocery store, an essential institution to the city, I've struggled to make rent in the past, in the very recent past, and recently had to change my living arrangements due to rent increases in my old neighborhood. I was lucky to find affordable housing, luckier than a lot of people who live and work in our city. With already high rent in Portland, giving landlords the ability to raise rent as much as they want after a tenant leaves will hurt those who are already struggling with our city's rent. People who live, work and contribute to our city. The Act to Improve Tenant Protections is a misleading name and I urge the council to alter the language and to allow the the competing measure to go through. And that's really all I have to say about it, but thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Camille Howard. I live on Vesper Street in District 2. And I'm speaking today in support of Counselor Phillips' amendment. I work between 45 and 55 hours each week and can still just barely afford to live here in Portland. And I've had many friends and neighbors be asked to leave their apartment over the years and I've seen them struggle to find new housing in the city. This has led to a persistent anxiety that for some reason I may have to leave my apartment because the market is already so much more expensive than the rent that I'm paying now. If friends balloon even further in town, it means that I would lose my community and my life here in Portland. I encourage the council to consider how difficult the rental housing market already is for young people trying to start building their financial lives in the city and to change the summary language to reflect how this measure would truly affect the city and tenants who live here and to add the competing measure to the ballot that would truly protect Portland's tenants. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Elizabeth Frazier on Zoom.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me okay. My name is Elizabeth Frazier. I live on Commercial Street, right here in our lovely city of Portland. I am speaking this evening in support of setting the date for the Citizen Initiative for the earliest possible election date and appreciate the council's support of that effort. I am speaking in opposition to the effort to do a competing measure for two reasons. One, I, you know, do a lot in housing policy, both, you know, sort of locally and at the state level. And typically, those types of policies start in the housing committee and are brought forward in a thoughtful and deliberative process. That wasn't the case here. In fact, I don't believe the language has been reviewed by any deliberative body in advance of tonight's hearing. So I would oppose that for that reason, but also because I'm a renter here in Portland as well. Have been for about seven, eight years, been living in the same building during that period of time. And the landlord actually lives in the building with me, which is very unique. I live down on Commercial Street, so you can imagine how unusual that is. But in the first few years I was here, my rent probably increased 2% per year, maybe 2.5%. I was very happy about it. Since 2020, my rent has increased by the maximum every year. And I certainly understand the rationale for it. I don't blame the landlord whatsoever. They had to put in a multimillion dollar window refit project here this year and I'm sure that was a very expensive project for them and it should certainly be something that they're able to recover the value of the property in if and when I choose to leave. So I would say that encourage the council to oppose the competing measure that's been presented. And please set the election date as early as you can. And I'm going to give you back a minute and 12 seconds. Thanks so much.
Thanks for your comment. And here in chambers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Grayson Lookner. I'm a state representative in Portland. I reside on Warwick Street. And I'm here to speak in favor of the amendment. I serve on the Housing Committee at the State of Maine in the legislature. And I also want to apologize on the behalf of the State of Maine because we have not done nearly enough to address the housing crisis that you all are keenly aware that we are mired in and have been mired in for decades. So it's fallen not just to the state, the federal government has failed as well to provide solutions for housing. And that has forced this city to take action to protect tenants and to protect the notion that housing is a human right, which I believe to my core. So it's not easy. I'm going to say something that's probably going to alienate some people behind me. I don't think it's easy to be a landlord in Portland. I think it's much harder to be a tenant in Portland who is facing eviction, who doesn't know where they will end up and if they can keep their jobs, if they can live in this community that we all value so much. So I think that this amendment is well thought out. It's a compromise. It's going to make it easier to live in this city. And I truly don't believe that many building owners who are providing housing are going to struggle. I think if you look at the market treating our housing as a market, these people are doing just fine. And we have to ask ourselves, you, you folks have to ask yourselves, Madam Mayor, that, you know, what is the most important thing here? Providing a livable city for all or allowing small privileged segment of folks to continue to make large profits at the expense of people living here. So I'll savor the rest of my time and look forward to hearing you all chime in in the Housing Committee and I guess, well, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we go to Madeline on Zoom.
Hi, my name is Madeline McComber. I live on Deering Ave in District 3. I'm, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I just also want to include my voice in favor of the competing measure. Portland rents are incredibly high. I have multiple times over the pandemic had very unstable housing and honestly, it almost left our community for New York where I was able to find cheaper places to rent. But so much of my life is tied here that it was important to stay. This is my hometown. This is my community. And I think that it would be important to look at the language of the proposed ballot question as well as it's incredibly misleading. And that's all I really have to say. I feel like everybody who's been speaking in favor of the competing measure have had really beautiful points to make. And I just want to reiterate that I am in support of their voices as well and of the competing measure. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next in chambers. That's you. Yep.
Hi, I am Dylan and I live in D2 Grant Street. And I would like to speak out against the misleading language of this and advocate for changing the language to reflect the true spirit of this initiative. This is an amendment and not an improvement. It doesn't specify any improvements and to the protections for tenants. And the clearest point of the initiative is to gut rent protections. And all right.
So just a reminder, we're setting an election date for the Citizen Initiative, and then we're talking about the amendment that's being proposed.
Anyway. Okay. I lost my spot and now I'm all like, all right. So yeah, the language here is, does not. It's the first half of it. It doesn't say anything about the protections to tenants. And it doesn't say, it just says discourage. It does not say, it doesn't specify what disincentivizes landlords from evicting their tenants at the end of the year. It doesn't have any solid language to to support that. And I don't know why it's called an improvement to tenant protections when there's nothing in the language to support that. And I, every time something like this comes up, the young folks all show up because we're we're trying to make it. And and if we're if we're
Thirty second warning.
If we're turning off what's what the spirit of the rent control ordinance is and giving landlords free rein to increase their rents and incentivizes them to to discontinue leases and or, you know, not make improvements to properties. You know, there is no checks and balances for the, for any landlords to be genuine in keeping their tenants and all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Can I have one more minute?
I'll just ask you to wrap up. We've got a lot of folks who are looking to speak.
All right. Yeah, so it it offers no protections to the tenants at all and just yeah, it and so, yeah, that's what I want to speak against is that that how misleading the languages and how many of those 3,000 signatures just improved tenant protections and signed away. And anyway.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment. Next, we'll go back to Zoom. We've got Hadrian Hatfield.
Hello, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Hadrian Hatfield, and I live at 196 Brackett Street in District Two. I would like to voice my support of an amendment and adding a competing measure to this Citizens Initiative. I believe it's necessary to add an amendment despite the the lack of other instances of this happening in the past because of the confusing and misleading language of this is the initiative. I am one of the people who signed it and thought that I was signing something that would support tenants and only realized later after a great deal of effort and research that that I didn't support it. And I'm not here to talk about, like, we're not debating whether to support or reject the measure. But I, I think that it's necessary because to, to add an amendment because the language is misleading. And I support the proposed amendment slash competing measure because I believe it offers a reasonable compromise between the existing code and the citizens initiative. And I really appreciate the specificity of the exact things that would change, which I believe are the specificity is what's missing from the existing Citizens Initiative. So thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rosie Boys. I live on Morning Street in District One. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak tonight and why I support the competing measure. This past November, the voters of Portland overwhelmingly voted to enact a law that gave many new protections to tenants, including limiting the ability of landlords to excessively raise rents. In precincts with a high concentration of tenants, over 75% of voters voted yes. It should be clear to anyone why this is so incredibly popular with Portland's tenants. Rents already far exceed what many of us are able to afford, and many tenants, including myself, are only a rent raiser or two away from no longer being able to live in Portland, having to face leaving our friends, family, and community behind. Giving landlords the ability to raise rent as much as they want on turnovers as this new measure proposes will be devastating to our city and undo key elements of what we just voted on only four months ago. Anyone who is evicted or needs to find a new place to live for any other reason will find themselves facing rents much higher than they have now. Unlike some of the other residents here tonight, I did not grow up in Portland. For most of my life, I lived in rural and conservative parts of New England, and as a young trans woman, this was an incredibly difficult isolating experience. I cannot express in words how much leaving that behind and moving here changed my life better. The city is a place where I'm able to be myself and have a wonderful queer community. I cannot imagine ever wanting to leave. All that being said, while Portland prides itself on being a welcoming place for queer people, if we can't afford to live here, then no amount of rainbow crosswalks and pride flags and shop windows will amount to anything more than hypocrisy. If Portland wants to remain a safe harbor for queer people, then its housing policy must reflect that commitment. Trans people struggle disproportionately with homelessness due to having a much lower income on average, and higher rents will destroy the city's working-class queer community. If this happens, I simply do not know where else I will go. This ballot question, by enabling landlords to have unlimited increases on vacancies, will make it impossible for young queer kids to move here like I did. Many of them will be trapped in vulnerable and often abusive situations, as any vacant apartment in Portland will be privately expensive. I ask the council to support adding a competing measure to the ballot. The original measure claims that it will discourage no-fault evictions, but this is simply not true. The proposed competing measure will give voters a choice to actually limit this practice from happening while acting as a compromise and allowing landlords to raise rents when they actually earned it. I also encourage the City Council to change the summary language to be more neutral. The current language is misleading, and it is only fair that the voters know what they're voting on, unlike what happened when the signatures were collected, which is something that I personally witnessed happening. Thank you for giving me the time to speak, and in particular, I want to thank the two councilors for sponsoring the competing measure. I and Portland's tenants will not forget it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Matt Walker on Zoom.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to talk. My name is Matt Walker. I live at 655 Congress, and I am talking today because I want to speak in support of Councilor Phillips's competing proposal. So thank you to Councilors Phillips and Travarro. Wow, you've got guts. That's pretty cool. I think it's really cool when the councilors want to step up for the citizens. So specifically, I like this proposal because what it's doing, this competing proposal, right? What it's doing is it's specifically targeting the claimed intent of the original proposal, right? So the original proposal talked about incentives for landlords to increase rents on existing tenants, and it talks about discouraging no-cause evictions, but nowhere in what they're going to do is actually going to do that. So the, the counselor's competing proposal targets those concerns that they said they had and come up with, and came up with a solution to fix them. And I especially like that the, their summary language here is specific. It's got like an A, B, C, D of exactly what it's going to do. Right? A, B, C, D, exactly what it's going to do. You can scroll through the legal text, and that's exactly what it does. When you look at the original language's summary, it, it talks about the incentives and it talks about what it discourages, but it does not talk about what it actually does. What it actually does is says landlords can just jack up the rent between each tenant, and it's going to just break rent control. That's literally what the intent is. So given the circumstance with the signature collections, I think it might be a good idea for the council to take a look at the original summary language too, and just make sure that it's actually talking about what it will exactly do, right? What's, what's it going to do? And not about what it says its intent is, not about what the incentives or what it discourages, just what does it do? So I fully support the competing proposal. It's specific in what it's going to do, and it directly addresses what the purported intent of the original proposal was. It's a really incredible piece of work to put out so quick, and I thank you. I really think you've got guts, and it's super awesome to see that coming from my City Council. So thank you.
Good evening, councilors and Madam Mayor. My name is Katie Wilson, and I live in District Two on Hill Street. I am speaking tonight in support of the competing measure. As has been stated time and again this evening, housing in Portland is already cost prohibitive and hard to come by. Portland voters demonstrated in both 2020 and 2022 that they support rent control and want to see housing made more affordable in this city. Councilor Phillips and Councilor Travarro have crafted a competing measure that seeks to preserve the core tenants of rent control while concurrently making a compromise with those landlords who are concerned about their ability to increase their rents after a tenant voluntarily vacates their unit. Thank you for your time. I hope you will vote in support of the competing measure.
Thank you for your comment. We'll head back to Zoom. Winston Lumpkins.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and the Portland City Council. For the sake of democracy, it's essential that people understand what they're signing and what they're voting for. I expect the council to provide a clear and neutral description and title for the referenda, as you have done for other referendums in the past. It's disingenuous for an act to improve tenant protections to be called any kind of improvement. Though it is poorly written and confusing, it will create at least a slightly increased motive to coerce tenants to leave their apartments. Existing regulations, in spite of November's election, are not sufficient to protect tenants from being asked to leave so that landlords can raise rent even by 5%. Some of my closest friends have been deeply affected by this in the last few months and are facing an uncertain housing situation because of it. Self-reporting your landlord's wrongdoing simply does not work and cannot work. An act to improve tenant protections, in fact, does nothing to further prevent the displacement of current tenants and leaves in place the currently insufficient system of self-reporting. It will not improve tenant protections, and it will lead to displacement and abuse of Portland's tenant population. This may be the will of the people in June, but we must be aware of what we're voting on. I can't write that description any more than the authors of this petition could, but I trust the council can figure it out with the help of Portland's Corporation Council, whose office I hold in the highest regard. That said, I support the competing measure, as I think it is a good idea to allow landlords to fully empty their banked rent increases between tenants. Speaking as a tenant, I have no issue with yearly increases in rent when I know what they're for, as is now the case, and they are limited to 10% per year. Inflation exists, after all. But it would be nice if there weren't banked rent hanging over a new tenant's head. Tenants aren't greedy. We're afraid. I will also mention, I think if the legal language of a referendum is under a single page, it should be included on the ballot, as otherwise, there is never, no point in ever having discussed printing it at all. I admit disagreeing with the clerk on that point. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for your comment. Next in chambers.
My name is Bobby Cope, and I live in Portland at 172 Concord Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My husband and I have been left-leaning Democrats since we first registered to vote in 1972. We own three, three-unit buildings in Portland full of wonderful tenants, and we live in half of a duplex and rent the other half to our son and his family. We love our home, and we love having our granddaughter right next door. We have been lifelong Portlanders for almost 70 years. I grew up in an apartment with my grandmother and aunts downstairs. My husband lived downstairs from his grandparents until he was 10. I have never lived in a single-family house. We understand why people live in apartments, and that has been part of our philosophy as landlords. In the past, I never raised the rents on existing tenants. I have great tenants. I had one tenant for 20 years. I never raised the rent. I only raised it upon a vacancy. Now I raise the rents each year by the percentage allowed in an effort to someday get to market rate if I live long enough. We have treated our tenants fairly and favorably without government intervention. I believe that I represent a typical Portland landlord. I support the language and summary of the proposal which was submitted via the referendum process because I believe it will allow us to continue to provide this housing to our tenants without increasing rents every year. I went door to door, neighbor to neighbor, friend to friend, gathering signatures for it. They understood what they were signing and did so with enthusiasm. The proposal I worked for is narrow in focus and easy to understand. It remains, it maintains all tenant protections in the current rent control ordinance. I support putting it on the June ballot. Conversely, the competing measure is confusing and perhaps deliberately so. This will only make matters worse for tenants and the rental housing supply. If the council wants to bring forth housing policy proposals of such a complex nature, such proposals should be thoroughly analyzed and vetted to the proper city agencies on housing. I ask you to please deny putting the competing rent control proposal on the ballot. It will not serve Portlanders well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we go to Zoom. Tyler Matts.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, folks. My name is Tyler Matts. I live on Salem Street in District Two. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking out in support of the competing measure. I'm a blue-collar worker in Maine. Finding reasonably priced housing in Portland has always been a tremendous challenge. The problem is that working people are an essential part of any healthy city, and this ballot question, an act to improve tenant protections, proposes measures that will make our lives even harder. It's a misleading name, in my opinion, and I urge you to alter the summary language of this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next in chambers.
Hello, my name is Wes Pelletier. I live on Crescent Street in the West End. First, I just want to clarify, there is no committee process for competing referendums, so this is the process. We are in it. This referendum question is a cynical attempt by the Southern Maine Landlords Association to undermine the democratic process. But fortunately, our C's charter places checks in the hands of the City Council to deal with just these circumstances. So many of these people who signed this petition, perhaps the majority, signed because they were told that this would protect tenants and lower rent. I was specifically told there's actually two items on the ballot, and this one was the good one. So is the City Council's, additionally, is the City's council duty as defined in state law to ensure that ballot language accurately reflects the referendum at hand. And the language being put forward in this amendment, well, the amendment we've heard about, that language should be improved. The language right now, as we've heard, very misleading. Regardless, more importantly, the other amendment being put forward tonight is a compromise between the actual impact of the referendum, just to allow landlords to raise rent on turnover, and then what the signatures were telling everyone in any crowd that I was in, which is that this would strengthen tenant protections. This is exactly the sort of situation the, the council's power to add a competing measure to the ballot was created to rectify. And I hope you all take this opportunity to give voters an option this June that reflects more accurately what they were sold. I'd also like to thank the councilors for putting these amendments forward for their labor time consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll go to Rose Greeley on Zoom.
Hi, good evening. I'm Rose Greeley, and my husband and I currently provide rental housing in Portland. We've been part of the community for 35 years and Portland property owners for 25. For many years, we lived in our apartments alongside our tenants as we improved the buildings. We offered below-market rental rates, successfully balanced rent increases with what our tenants could actually pay, and made great friends along the way. We provide housing for new Mainers, low-income folks, and asylum seekers, which started as an opportunity to help a community in need of safe and clean housing has become an expensive and baffling effort to meet the city's ever-growing demands on property owners. We're selling the building because balancing our vision with what the city expects is no longer tenable. I'm speaking today for three reasons. Setting housing policy should be carefully considered to address the needs of all and not rush through as part of a political agenda. And I personally worked to gather signatures for the proposed ballot question and found enthusiastic support from every person I spoke with. The Act to Improve Tenant Protections is a common sense and narrow fix that maintains all current tenant protections. I strongly support the straightforward Act to Improve Tenant Protections. I strongly support the straightforward Act to Improve Tenant Protections and the accompanying summary. I urge you to vote against the very confusing proposed competing measure and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Uh, thank you for your comment. We'll go next to chambers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councillors. My name is Glenn Gallic and I live on Hill Street in District Two. Um, I am speaking tonight in support of adding a competing measure to the ballot. Um, I want to thank Councillor Phillips, Councillor Travarro and all of the staff for working on such short notice to put forward um, what I believe is a well-thought-out and carefully considered measure on such short notice. Um, I believe this measure strikes a balance between the financial needs of landlords by raising the maximum allowable rent increase in case of voluntary turnover from 10% to 20%. The strengthening of tenant protections uh, by protecting against no-fault evictions and respecting the immense difficulty of enforcing rent control by defining what a voluntary turnover is and outlining a process for landlords to complete should they wish to claim the voluntary turnover rent increase. I am deeply concerned that should the proposed referendum pass, uh, we will see an increase in no-fault evictions followed by unlimited rent increases which will go unchallenged and never be walked back. Thank you for your time and careful consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Jenna Lutz on Zoom.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jenna Lutz. I live in Libby Town. Um, I'm speaking tonight to strongly support changing the summary language to the proposed ballot question and adding a competing measure. The title of this ballot question itself is very concerning, let alone its content. The title is intentionally deceptive as this measure will in no way improve tenant protections. It's actually quite the opposite. It serves only to benefit landlords like those who belong to the organization, who got this measure on the ballot through misleading campaigning. On the contrary, removing restrictions on rent raises between lease contracts poses a huge threat to housing accessibility for working-class folks. Ask any working renter in Portland and they would tell you that renting in the city is already extremely difficult. I've personally witnessed many friends' rent being raised multiple times within the span of a few months despite no real change occurring in the unit to reflect that raised rent. If this ballot measure passes in the election, rental units in the city will become even more unreasonably expensive and price-out hardworking people who struggle to keep up with rent and cost of living as it is, just to enrich landlords who feign financial struggle. I urge you to alter the deceptive summary language of this initiative and to, to reflect its true impact on tenants and to support adding a competing measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment and our next speaker is in chambers.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Snyder. Uh, you know, I, my name is Rebecca Starr. Uh, I live on Melbourne Street in District One. Um, as I was standing here, you know, I had something to say, all written out, and then everyone in front of me just came forward and said it much better than I could. Um, so for the sake of time, I will just keep it short and say uh, that I support the addition of the competing measure. Um, and I thank Councilmember Phillips and uh, Councilmember Travarro for putting it forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Nori Hilton on Zoom.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Nori Hilton and I live on Bellfield Street. I'm speaking tonight in support of changing the summary language to the proposed ballot question and in favor of the competing measure. Portland rents are already prohibitively high, causing a housing crisis in our city. Giving landlords the power to increase rent however much they want on turnovers will only make things worse. Calling this ballot question an act to improve tenant protections is misleading and biased. It does not protect tenants, rather it allows landlords to increase their wealth. I urge you to alter the summary language of this initiative and I support the competing measure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we're in chambers.
Hi, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sarah Loudon and I live on Park Avenue in District Two. Um, I'm here tonight to urge all councillors to change the summary language of the proposed referendum question as well as to vote in favor of adding a competing ballot measure to Portland's June ballot. As it currently stands, both the referendum title and Act to Improve Tenant Protections and its accompanying summary language are incredibly misleading and are written to intentionally confuse voters. In fact, during their signature collection drive last month, the Southern Maine Landlords Association
Hi there, I'm just going to try to redirect you to setting the election date and then the addition of a possible amendment.
Uh, the Southern Maine Landlords Association, the group behind this referendum, hired circulators who intentionally misled uh, many Portland voters into signing their petitions.
If you could stick, please, to the public hearing that was posted. Um, I realize you don't want to, but I'm, I'm trying to get people to stick to the plan, which is we're setting an election date and we've got an amendment to consider. So thanks for, for adjusting maybe a focus on the content of the citizen initiative, which will be decided by voters.
It needs to be reiterated that Portland voters decisively cast their ballots in favor of rent control in 2020 and again in 2022 to strengthen those existing tenant protections. Our city's landlords are now trying to trick Portland tenants, as you've heard from multiple signers of the petition, into voting against their own self-interests. Why? It's so these same landlords can continue to profit off of the working-class people in the city. As the Portland Press Herald reported just a few weeks ago, though in the last decade in Portland, we've witnessed an increase in fair market rent prices by 84%. Uh, councillors, I ask you in earnest, how many people do you know whose income has risen 84% over the past 10 years to keep up with such high rental increases? It should come as no surprise that currently between 50 and 70% of tenants in Portland are cost-burdened by their monthly rents. And those are the people who are lucky enough to be able to find a place to live in Portland and the people who have not yet been priced out of their homes. An Act to Improve Tenant Protections is in fact the opposite of what it claims to be. It is a way for landlords, many of whom do not even reside in Portland,
Second warning.
to continue to line their pockets with profits. It is at its core merely another mechanism for the rich to get richer at the expense of tenants. And if it passes in June, it will only add to Portland's escalating housing crisis. I want to thank the councillors who have already come out in support of a competing measure and to thank those who have already spoken in favor of changing the summary, summary language of this initiative and I urge all remaining councillors to do the same. Thank you.
Harlan Baker on Zoom, please.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Harlan Baker. I resided at 44 Mitten Street in Portland. I'm asking you to support a competing measure to the uh, petition that you have before you. I'm going to give you the reason why. I was one of the people who were misled into signing the petition. On the evening of February the 10th, I was approached by a young man asking if I would sign his petition on rent control. I asked about the petition and he assured me it was in support of rent control. I mentioned there was a petition going around
Madam Mayor, point of order.
And he assured me
Thank you councillor. So Harlan, I'm going to redirect you again to
Reason why I think you should put out a competing measure. And I think you should put out a competing measure because of the, the uh, misleading attempts by the landlord association to get this measure on the ballot. That is
Well, that's helpful context. Thank you. I'm serious. I didn't know that you were advocating for the amendment, so go ahead. Thank you.
You know, I really don't like being interrupted. I don't interrupt you. You shouldn't be interrupting me. I've had nothing else I want to say. Goodbye.
Okay. Next we'll come to a speaker in chambers.
Hi, um, my name is Sarah McKee. I'm a Realtor here in Portland and my husband and I own a multi-unit on St. John's Street. Uh, the very first time we raised the rent since purchasing the building in 2017 was after rent control was enacted and our ability to bring our units to market was prohibited. One of our units is a three-bedroom. Our current rent for that unit, unit after a legal rent raise is $1,375. This is nearly $1,000 under what the state defines as affordable housing in Portland. We'd love to keep our current renters in place without raising the rent, but we are simply unable to do so under the current law, under rent control. So like many other landlords, we reluctantly raised rent for the first time on our tenants. My husband and I also worked hard on the signature drive. Uh, we worked with 80 volunteers to get this small tweak on the ballot. We made sure they understood the issue and allowed for voters to read the initiative. Every petition had the proposed ordinance attached. In addition, it was confirmed that when the petitions were returned to the city, they were still attached. Uh, we met with gatherers bi-weekly to ensure that things were running smoothly and gather, gatherers were able to touch base, express concerns and ask questions. We are proud of our effort. We collected over 3,000 signatures from registered Portland voters, twice the amount required by the city. I have concerns with the last-minute amendment, amendment proposed by two city councillors. The amendment does nothing to incentivize landlords to not increase rent under the rent control ordinance. Additionally, it seems out of precedent of previous councillor, councils as competing measures were never added to the myriad of citizens' initiatives over the last few election cycles. I feel this competing measure will only confuse voters and I hope that the council chooses to place an Act to Improve Tenant Protections on the ballot without a competing measure.
Uh, thank you for your comment. Spencer M. on Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Spencer McFadden and I live on Washington Avenue in District Five. Uh, I am speaking in support of changing the summary language on the proposed ballot question and in favor of the competing measure. Uh, rents are already ridiculously high. Um, voluntarily uh, raising is one of the common tactics of gentrification um, to a city which would make Portland much, much less diverse. Um, calling this ballot question an Act to Improve uh, Tenant Protections is straight-up lying, um, and like the uh, signature gathering tactics used, outright deceptive. Uh, they repeat a lot. They, I um, ended up signing. I got a lot of uh, the uh, phrasing of rent control uh, repeated to me a lot, um, without actually going into it and I would like people to actually um, be able to afford to live um, in the city. I urge you, uh, all city council members, uh, to alter the summary language of this initiative and um, I am in favor of the competing measure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next comment is in chambers.
Hi, my name is Buddy Moore. I live at 95 Wilt Street. I served on the rent board and helped to draft the current rent stabilization ordinance that was passed as Question C last November. Uh, in the Portland metro area, I'm likely one of the most qualified individuals to speak about this topic. Portland is a city of tenants with almost 60% of our residents being renters and even more of our community members experiencing housing insecurity or homelessness. We are all existing tenants because we do not have control over our housing. I would encourage councillors to support a competing measure that would truly protect tenants. A reasonable proposal that addresses the concerns of frequent rent increases on incumbent renters while still allowing landlords to obtain a fair return. What the Southern Maine Landlord Association is proposing, in contrast to the competing measure, is called vacancy de-control. This was implemented in many California cities at the behest of landlords, resulting in dire consequences for renters. According to several studies, the median rent in these cities doubled under vacancy de-control. Each time a tenant moves out, that will be one less affordable part, apartment in Portland, leading to what researchers call involuntary displacement. This process is a key driver of gentrification and the displacement and replacement of our community members. Despite concerns that landlords are unable to recoup investments and make needed repairs, the law already provides a pathway for them to reasonably increase rent, to recoup capital investments and make needed renovations, all while receiving a fair return on their investment in line with decades of legal and regulatory precedent. This process was approved by the council earlier tonight. The difference between the initiative in question and the law we have now, as well as the competing measure, is simply that the current system requires public oversight over drastic rent increases while the proposed ordinance does not. This oversight is crucial to protect the interests of the majority of Portland residents. In the midst of this current housing crisis, the first thing we must do is keep the housing we do have as affordable as possible to tenants who make up most of our residents. The SMLA proposal alone would be a step backwards in the wrong direction for Portland. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll go to John, uh, John on Zoom.
Hey there, uh, John Wasdew, Tigert Wasd. I live on Robert Street, uh, in Oakdale neighborhood and I'm just wanted to um, speak out in support of this competing measure um, to this ballot initiative thing that the landlord association put out there. Um, I myself am starting to have to like look for new housing and dear lord, is it expensive? Um, and not sure I'm going to be able to stay in Portland, but I'm also a social worker and a fair number of folks um, that I work with who are low-income, live in Portland, have been, just in the last year, getting displaced. Um, some of the things that landlords have pulled have been blatantly illegal. Um, but all of it really points to they were longtime tenants. Landlords clearly want market rate. They're pushing them out. Um, so I see this um, competing measure as um, hopefully a step in the right direction um, and away from this astroturfed whatever um, that these people put together. Um, and I also would urge that landlords just sell their buildings and get a real job. Um, and thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you for your comment. Um, it is super hard to try to focus these comments tonight, so I really do appreciate when folks try. Um, I think we're being pretty loose with comment in general. People are passionate. We get that. We like that. That's why we're here. But I really am urging on both sides of the issue, focus on the publicized public hearing for tonight. I think it's just respectful, um, both of, you know, us and you and, and, and the differing viewpoints. So if we could do our best to focus on the published public hearing content, that would be really appreciated. Thank you. So we'll go to our next speaker in chambers and then we've got a handful of other folks back on Zoom.
I don't, I don't know what that means. What do you want me to do? I'm sorry.
Oh, just, just have been reminding that what we published for a public hearing tonight is Order 157, 157, which is focused on setting an election date for the citizen initiative. So we're talking about, um, you know, we've heard from some folks, we'd like to see this on the June ballot. That's what's before us tonight. And then we've got a competing measure, an amendment to Order 157, and so we're focusing comments on the amendment and people's support or not for that amendment.
Okay, so do I say that I'm in support of the amendment?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm in support of this.
But first, if you wouldn't mind giving us your name and neighborhood and thank you.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm sorry, I haven't done this in years. Um, my name is Howa. I live on Park Ave. Um, I've been a renter for several years. Um, so I, I'm here in support of the amendment. Um, like I said, I'm a Portland resident. I, me, my family have lived here for over 20 years. Um, after college, I decided to stay here because I fell in love with the city. You know, like five years in and I, I wanted to stay here, so I was able to find semi-affordable housing that wouldn't put me in debt and I was really lucky, so I immediately signed up. It's been two years since I was able to find it, um, anything like that in numbers. And although I consider myself lucky, I still am at an at-will tenant. Um, and so are the rest of us who uh, are tenants under a certain landlord company here in Portland. Um, I actually got a reminder on my way here today that my rent will be going up. It's only going up by $30, which is great, right? Um, I don't have a li- lease right now, so like I said, I'm actually like an at-will tenant. Um, right now, legislation is preventing landlords from deciding the price for people like me. Um, being at-will, I could be moved out next month if that's what my lease says. I don't have a lease, kind of unprotected here, so I just wanted to give my experience as an example. Um, this is why we need ordinances. I'm no stranger to confusing language. I asked earlier um, about what this meant. The language part is so essential. Um, English is my second language, as you all, uh, some of you all know. Um, and although I would say I'm pretty proficient, when I tried to read more info on this specific measure, I was actually, I left the document more confused than I was starting it. What I did find out, though, is that this measure will allow landlords to essentially name their price when a tenant moves out. Why that isn't clear is lost on me. Um, 60 cents 60%, 60% of people in Portland are Portland renters. I think the person behind me um said that earlier. We want to stay here. We want to contribute to the city. We love the city. This isn't a radical leftist group organizing together and showing up to take over Portland politics. These are. Families like mine who call the city home and want to stay. Please listen to your constituents tonight and please make this language clear. This is your chance to do the right thing. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we'll go to Damon on Zoom.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Damon Yakovlev. I live on Bolton Street in District Three in a single family home. I'm neither a tenant nor a landlord. I'm speaking to you tonight. In support of the competing measure and in favor of amending uh the ballot language before you. And I'll stick to um process related arguments. Um, I believe that the process, the collectors used to collect signatures. Was flawed and muddied the waters in terms of um creating an impression that the citizen initiative. Somehow uh provides something for tenants here, which it clearly does not if it's red. And there is a video evidence I'm aware of, of a collector who actually did not provide. Uh, the ballot language upon request, and I personally witnessed uh many collectors who missed, were highly misleading. Uh, in what the initiative uh actually would do. On the other hand, the competing measure actually does those things. That the collectors uh purported uh to do, that it would do. So I think in this case. The competing measure is, is warranted. Um, you, I, I've heard um a complaint that. It would muddy the waters. On, on the contrary, it would provide a great deal of clarity here. If you were to uh provide this competing measure, which based on the arguments and the number of signatures that we've heard. Actually might have a fair amount of support, something that legitimately has something for both landlords and tenants to liken it. So I think it's in the public interest for you to um both amend um the ballot language. Advanced by Southern Maine Landlord Association and their allies. And to uh add the competing measure to the ballot. So people have, have a choice. So that they can support something that there clearly is some amount of public support for. And I, I think it's within your power to do that um in terms of precedent. That was done recently in 2021, a competing measure was added uh to uh citizen initiative. Related to homeless service center policies and it also um the.
Thirty second warning.
The amendment language was also edited in that case, so it's well within your power to, to. Edit the language, add a competing measure, and there's also precedent to do that. So thank you all for your time this evening, and I hope you will do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in chambers? Okay, we'll head back to Zoom. Amelia Kelleher.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Mia Kelleher and I'm a renter on Grant Street in District Two. And I'm here today to express my support of the measure um and to clarify the language of the current ballot measure. I'm also in favor of adding Council Phillips' proposed competing measure to the June ballot. Um, and a study released last Thursday for the National Low Income Housing Coalition found that affordable housing is unavailable for more than half of Maine's poorest renters. And data from 2021 shows that Maine's rental housing market is among the least affordable in the nation. With nearly 60% of extremely low-income households spending over 50% of their income on rent. So as a renter who was misled into signing the petition, um, I believe the, the language of the existing measure needs to be clarified. And along with some of my peers who are also misled into sending the petition. I have requested, I requested to have my name removed from the ballot and unfortunately it had already been submitted to city council. But so after conducting additional research on the current measure. I believe that if passed, it would exacerbate the ongoing housing crisis by further increasing prohibitively high rental rates. So in short, it just strikes me as very um undemocratic to put a measure on the ballot that is worded in such a way as to intentionally confuse or sway Portland voters. Which is already done. We've heard that from many constituents tonight. So I don't think that's something that you should feel proud of, as um was said a few minutes ago, but. I would urge all councillors here tonight to alter the summary language of the initiative and uh the proposed competing measure to the ballot. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Um, next speaker on Zoom is Alevi. You'll have to unmute yourself. Okay, we'll, we'll come back to you um in hopes it works out. Uh, next speaker, Joe.
Yes, hi. This is Joe Luciano. I'm a property owner and I rent to 15 um renters in, in Portland. I purchased a building in 2015 with my family, um, first generation um American, uh, Italian-American. I, I bring that up because I have a, a tenant who's from El Salvador. She's a, a new um, a, a new ma'am. And she's got two children and I've been renting to her since 2015 and since then, we've worked things out to try to accommodate. Not increasing rent. And unfortunately, as a result of, of rent control, I've had to increase rent each year and it's, and it's something that. I wish I could avoid, but uh, you know, having not raised rents since 2015. Has really uh created a very below-market uh rent for that unit. And so I bring that up because. Um, if I have the ability to raise to a market rate upon her choosing to, to move out. Then that would make it much easier for me to uh maintain the status quo that we started in 2015. And I bring this up because of the fact that adding this amendment that is complicated, that many people on both sides of the fence. This uh, this evening have, have mentioned how confusing and how convoluted the wording is. The, the way that the wording for the initial uh initiative that was put forth. Was that we're going to keep all rent controls in place. But upon that person's voluntary leaving of the unit, we can raise rents to a marketable rate. And keeping things simple on a ballot, I think is crucial because what that allows is somebody to say yes or no. I want to move forward with this. This sounds like a good idea, or I don't. Adding a, a, an alternative to that makes it very difficult for there to be an affirmative position. And so we put forth a, a proposal so that we could. Allow market rates to be adjusted upon uh somebody voluntarily moving out. But it gives us the flexibility to say, hey, listen. You know, things are working out great. I want to keep you as a tenant. You can't afford more. Okay, we'll, we'll work this out. Um, and unfortunately our hands are tied. We have to, I, you know, it, as I mentioned earlier, need to increase rent each year. So. Nothing more to say other than the fact that I would like to set uh the June ballot and uh, you know, the, the earliest ballot. And to keep things simple so that it is a yes or a no on the ballot to what was put forth and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and we'll try again with Alevi. So you are permitted to talk on our end, but we need you to unmute yourself. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to Eli.
Hi, um, my name is Eli. I live on Cumberland Ave in Portland, Maine. It came to my attention that the petition I signed, that uh, it's now what we're speaking about. Completely misled me in the information that was given. I now understand that it would eliminate the 5% cap in rent increase that currently exists on units that are voluntarily left by the tenant. I also want to mention that uh. A couple of the landlords have been mentioning that they've unfortunately had to raise rent um each year. It is not my understanding that landlords have to raise rent each year and that this would um help them in not forcing them to raise rent. Is my understanding that this new amendment, which again, I agree, has very confusing language and I support um the clarification of. Would eliminate the 5% uh cap and so that, great, um, you could bring a, a lower income. Apartment up to market value, but you could also bring a market value one way uh, way above what it, what it, what it should be. So that being said, um, I'll keep it brief and I urge you to amend the ballot language on this question to remove any language that seemingly promotes. Renters uh good, goodwill and to um. Add a competing measure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and next we'll go to Britt Vitaleos.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Britt Vitaleos. I'm president of the um much uh spoken about rental housing alliance. This is really a, a process question this evening and um, and, and one we're concerned about. I think it's worth looking at the language. We've heard a lot about housing challenges and greedy landlords. But looking at the language, I think the council has to determine whether it warrants and need a competing measure. There is about all of one sentence in the proposed language. That is, that is what's in here. It says, if the tenancy of a covered unit is terminated voluntarily by a tenant. The landlord may establish a new base rent at their discretion. And then it defines voluntary termination and the rest of it is about protecting the tenants. That's all. So I'm not sure what all these charges are about the confusion and then um the clarity of the um competing measure. I think the Green New Deal was rather confusing when it was an inclusionary housing bill called the Green New Deal. And what feels like happening is the DSA and Ethan Strumling are finding. A way to get something on the ballot without having to go through the process, uh, the referendum process here in the city. So to the substance of.
Order Mayor, can we make sure he stays on topic, please? I'm sorry, um, yes, uh.
Well, I'm.
Just focusing on the content of the public hearing this evening, which is setting the election date for the citizen initiative and the amendment that we have before us in the packet to 157.
Understood. I apologize. I was trying to cite the precedent for other titles and other summaries that have been in the past. And this exists within that context. I certainly, the, I would like to hear the council explain um. What's going on in the counterproposal and how it's a competing measure against what is really a very simple question. A 20% increase is not a given increase. We've all read this several times over the weekend and it's very confusing. 20% is a cap of the increase, but that's on top of only what you get is a banked rent, 70% of CPI and only 5% on a turnover. Those things are never going to equal 20%. So I think this is misleading. It's much more complicated. And we'd really like to know where it came from. The referendum process is a challenge in the city. We tried to craft this, thank you, in a very, very narrow way. I hope the council wrestles with the proposal, puts it on the ballot and sees that there is no need for countermeasure. Anyone who signed anything could easily read the language. It was there and if it wasn't there, they should not have signed. But the process is important and anything that comes forward from the council should be clear, should have been deliberated. It's coming forward in the council's name. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And thank you for the point of order, um, councillor Fornier. Okay, uh, Alevi, are you able to, to speak?
I am. I think I unmuted myself.
Great, you did.
Okay, um, good evening. Uh, my name is Alan Levy. I live on Fessenden Street in Portland. And I own rental units in South Portland as well as in Portland. And I am speaking in opposition to the competing measure of the referendum initiative. I respect the care and the due diligence that the South Portland City Council engaged in order to put together their rent control policy. While one may agree or disagree with the outcome, what I can say is that the process is good governance. It was un-rushed, thoughtful and stakeholders were considered. Over a two-year period, the city of South Portland developed their rent control policy. I consider this good governance. The city of Portland also has the opportunity to exercise good governance this evening. There are lessons to be learned from the South Portland City Council's rent control process. Please consider the due diligence and the amount of time it took for South Portland to come out with a well-thought-out rent control policy. And then please consider the process of how councillor Phillips and councillor Trevor Rose's competing measure came to be. I am unsure of how much due diligence went into the crafting of their measure. I am unsure if stakeholders were involved. I am unsure of its clarity to tenants or to landlords. The only fact that I am sure of is that this measure was presented publicly this past Sunday at the 11th hour. I am not asking the city councillors to vote for or against this amendment measure based on whether they are for or against rent control. I feel the council should vote against this measure due to its lack of a transparent and thorough process. The city of Portland voters deserve better if they, if they are going to vote on a measure to amend rent, rent control. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I want to thank everybody who has offered comment tonight. I'm going to close public comment on order 157. We've had about 40 speakers, both here in chambers and on Zoom. And again, um, little tricky to keep everybody on course. But the effort was, is really made um to, you know, try to, try to stick with what we've publicized for a public hearing. And be relevant to the order in front of the council for action tonight. So as we get into our discussion, we're going to need a motion and a second to consider what's before us this evening. So I'm looking for a motion from the council, please. So moved. Is there a second? Councillor Trevaro with the second on Zoom. Thank you. So we will get into uh council discussion. Um, councillor Phillips, at the appropriate time, you can go ahead and offer your amendment. I would like to turn to the clerk, just because we do have an inclusion in the packet that has to do with. Signature gathering and other elements associated with the clerk's work to support the council's action to set an election date. So. If you, I just want to tee you up for that, so that can be, um, you know, put, put on the record that we've got that memo in the packet. And then we'll go to council for discussion.
So um, on February 16th, the Rental Housing Alliance filed petitions in our office regarding the amendments to the Portland City Court of Ordinances. Chapter six, Buildings and Building Regulations. Petitions were titled, "An Act to Improve Tenant Protections." Petitions contained a total of 4,013 signatures for verification. Through that process, we validated 3,087 signatures and 926 of them were rejected. The required number of signatures needed to be put on the ballot is 1,500. We did have some uh complaints about uh removing signatures, but uh, once petitions are filed, we're not allowed to do so. So uh, they won't, they shouldn't be removed once they're filed in our office. Even with those complaints, the amount of signatures that were collected was way more than what was needed to be put on the ballot. During the council meeting in March 6th, the public hearing date was set for this evening, March 20th. The notice of public hearing as well as full text of the ordinance was put into Portland Press Herald on Friday, March 10th. Um, and then tonight's meeting, council will decide to put the initiative on the ballot for consideration on the June 13th, 2023 election. Under section nine dash four one A of the Portland City Code, I'm also requesting that the title and summary only be placed on the ballot due to the length of the text. Um, and it's not reasonably possible to reproduce the full text of the initiative on the ballot for June.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much um for sharing that information. And so we've got a motion. We've got a second. I look to the council for discussion. Councillor Zaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just for clarification, we are, we are discussing and debating the amendment as well, or primarily?
The amendment has been teed up but not yet offered, or uh, we don't have a motion um for it. So right now we're in the content of 157.
Okay, I'll do a little bit of both, uh, just because I feel like everything is really tied in. First of all, thank you everyone for giving comment. I feel like the only time we really see this room as full as it is tonight is when we're discussing referenda. The last time was in August, uh, and a lot of familiar faces are here tonight. Um, I'm just going to take a moment uh to discuss not the content of what we were talking about tonight so far with the referenda. Or the competing measure, but rather the process um that got us here. Um, I think we've come to a point where we can now expect referenda at every. I think we've come to a point where we can now expect referenda at every election, not just in November, but now in June. It really doesn't matter if the council's working on it in our committees. Even though that's what we were elected to do, but we're seeing them come in abundance. What was once a process that was meant to be the people's veto now feels a little bit weaponized into a back and forth in between elections. And it's resulting in enacting policies that are well-intentioned but have unintended consequences. It's putting us in a position of wanting to do the best we can, but having our hands tied because we can't change things in the moment. And it's, it's creating situations for city staff where they are not able to enact the policies themselves. It's even been shared tonight. So, you know, I personally just want to say I believe it's time for this council to collectively and collaboratively discuss and debate amendments to Chapter 9 and send our recommendations to Portlanders to align our referendum process with the state because this is not working. We are watching people tear each other apart every time they get something on the ballot. And we're going to disappoint whoever, whether it's you're in the room or someone who's watching on Zoom. You're going to be disappointed because we have very limited capacity in this moment. And so I'm really frustrated because I really want to help, but I can't. And I know my colleagues likely feel the same. Anyway, I digress. So it's already two, two and a half minutes left. Okay, so what I've heard a lot tonight is, I remember in 2022, the Landlord Association, it was a key funder of Enough is Enough, a group that was formed to oppose all referenda because they said that the referenda process was being abused. I remember being in this room with all of you or most of you. Welcome, counselor. And I remember we were being told, don't bring a competing measure, let Portlanders vote on it. We were being scolded. We were, if, if we considered that it was going to be a direct slap in the face of our citizenry, let the voters vote it up or down. And I, I agreed with that. And, and now I'm hearing the opposite and I'm feeling a moment of cognitive dissonance because I don't know which one it is. I, I, I want to thank my colleagues, you know, Counselor Phillips, Counselor Trevaro for engaging on this topic. I believe, you know, I did, I tried something similar last summer by adopting and referring. It didn't work out, but I know how hard it is. And you, you walk away from this meeting feeling pretty bruised and people can be really harsh. But it doesn't mean you're not coming from a really good place and you want to, you want to do good. And I, I respect you immensely for that, my friend. But, you know, I think it's really important for us to pursue what we're passionate about in this. I think that working with members of the community is really important. That being said, it's really important that we do that together. We, we have to do that collaboratively. And the last time this body considered a competing measure was in 2021. It was with the smaller shelters question. And at the time it had been worked on in HHS committee. I expressed my concern with it because I was not on that committee. And I didn't want to put a council-approved city's competing measure out without having a workshop on it. I had to go back and look at that meeting to remind myself of where I fell on that. And I can I, I'm having a hard time now and I had a hard time then saying, how can I understand the impacts of what this council was endorsing?
Thirty-second warning.
If I did, how is that possible? I'm going to need an extension without, I didn't speak at all tonight. So I'm going to, I'm going to take some of that other time.
It's horrible.
How am I going to understand something this impactful without having time to dig into it, without having a workshop, without having a dialogue and working together? I received this competing measure on Friday morning. It was three days ago. Many of the people we heard tonight knew more about this before I did. And I spent the weekend reading it, but that puts me in a really uncomfortable spot because I'm supposed to be ready and to dive in. And I'm just being really honest with everyone. This, this, we don't get any special access before most other people do. This is just the name of the game. For me, here's where I'm at. And I'm going to try to wrap it up really quick. I would really like to see this referred to HEDC so it can get a full analysis from city staff and colleagues on the council. I know that we are in a time crunch here, but there's nothing that says that we can't bring something back for a November ballot. That says, you know, because we'd have to put this out for referenda for voters to vote on. But this needs more due diligence. I don't want to endorse, and I don't believe endorsing any referenda at this point. Seeing this dueling back and forth, overturning what just had passed is, like I said at the beginning of this, it's unsustainable. It's not how you run a city. Citizens are getting whiplash. They're getting angry. They're getting upset on both sides. I understand that, but we can't exist in these polar opposite politicized realms. It's, it's not good for any of us. And I want to believe that folks are, are coming from a good place and, and they really want to see the best for the city, but I'm watching it tear. We're tear at the fabric of, of what we're doing here at municipal government. So I'm rambling. Ultimately, we need to bring landlords and tenants and developers and housing experts together. Seesawing between these questions isn't doing it. So just, just to be clear, I do not like this referenda. I personally will not be supporting it in June. I wasn't planning on bringing anything from the floor this evening as I thought colleagues were also going to tonight with their competing measure, bring amending the title. Because I do think the title is misleading and the council does have an obligation and a responsibility to amend that. I did not prep anything in the packet because I thought it was coming, but I would be open to amending the title of the referenda this evening to be objective and clear. And my understanding is that the summary will not be on the ballot, just the title. So we, we potentially wouldn't have to amend the summary.
Title and summary.
Mayor, I am corrected. Anyway, thank you for letting me go over. So sorry, I'll yield my time.
Thank you. There's no time to yield, Counselors.
Your time.
Okeydoke. Thank you for your comments and thoughts shared, Counselor Fornier.
Thank you so much. And I think what I'm going to say is very much echoes what Counselors Zaro just shared. And so I will try and keep it brief. And so I think my, my issue is again, more about process. And I appreciate that I had a great chance to chat with Counselor Phillips over the weekend to just talk a little bit through the content. It's not for me that I disagree with the content of what's in this. I very much agree that a lot of this needs to happen. But I think we also heard from the public that, you know, there is no committee process to be able to talk about referendums. You're right, because we're not supposed to govern by referendum. We have, we're set up to govern through committee, through this deliberative body where we can engage experts on city staff in our corporation council, in the community to talk about all of these issues and be able to put forward good policy that's going to benefit more than just, again, as Counselor mentioned, Counselors Zaro mentioned, this, this back and forth. And so I think I, I really appreciate the referendum process. I think you need to have the, the ability to be able to question the governing body. But again, it feels like we are doing this in every election. Nothing has a chance to even get underway or be worked on because now we're in the next election cycle and trying to establish what's going to be coming next. And so I think for me, it's, it's sort of ironic as Counselors Zaro mentioned that this last election, we had a group very loudly advocating against referendum. And then the next election, they are using that as their vehicle to move policy. And I just, I feel like this is not productive. It's taking up city staff time. I really believe that, you know, I have been the Chair of Legislative Committee and currently I'm the Chair of Health and Human Services and Public Safety. And being able to have the ability to bring in experts, have deliberative conversations, be able to ask questions of Corporation Council, I'm very proud of some work we're getting to do on pregnancy crisis centers and, you know, being able to bring forward that for our city, but it's through conversations that we're having with all of these different bodies to be able to, to make good policy that will withstand challenge that will be enacted for our city. So I'm, I'm getting a little bit afar too. Really bringing it back to say, I, I want us to have, we know rent controls work, you know, in different municipalities. I really have high respect for my fellow sister councillors, Trevaro and Phillips, and appreciate that they brought this forward. I too would love to see it. And I, in my notes had said, I would love to see whether it's a task force or an ad hoc committee or going back to HEDC, the ability to bring together all of these stakeholders to talk about how do we right-size this for our city? You know, we've heard from both landlords that have hundreds of units and those that have four and live in one of the four. And so I don't believe it's a one size fits all, but we can't discover that if we only have 48 hours to review very complex housing policy. I'm not a housing policy expert. That's not my job. My job is training people how to run for office, you know, who are native leaders in their own communities. So I have to be able to talk to experts and have time to deliberate. I need also some downtime over a weekend to be able to spend time with my family. And so when we get something on Friday afternoon, to have to make such a significant decision, this is not a quick and easy policy. I called Corporation Council this afternoon to try and work through some of my questions as well. And so I don't feel good about putting something on the ballot that I don't have all of my questions answered and having to now talk about this after an entire council meeting, debate this late into the evening. You know, I just don't, I don't feel comfortable being able to move this forward. So while I appreciate what the body of it is and I do want to move these types of things forward, I think there are other avenues that we need to use rather than putting out a competing measure. So I'll leave it there. Thank you. Thirty seconds to spare.
And you can yield that time?
I'll, I'll give it back to Counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fornier. Counselor Dion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, let's do it in June. That's the easiest part of the issue tonight. Let's, I vote for June. In terms of the competing measure, I'll vote against it. All right. And I, I spoke with Counselor Phillips beforehand and it's really a matter of process. Certain people gathered petitions, how they gathered them, there are venues to deal with that, if they can be approved. But the fact of matter is certain citizens gathered a petition opposing a question of the public. It's incumbent on the public to become educated. It's almost like we want to make sure they can't get confused. Isn't that said in every single election for every referendum question? My God. If I sense I could lose, they might be confused. If I sense they win, they must have understood everything I've said. I do agree with my fellow counselors. This journey we've taken into policy by referendum is disastrous. And I tried early in tonight's meeting to give us an illustration of that when I posed questions to the Chair of the Rental Board to see if we could make modifications in something that I sensed he understood was a challenge for some of our constituencies. We, somewhere on the city, recognized a similar challenge. There ain't nothing we can do, right? Because it's a five-year term. That's no way to run government. All right. Somebody says, yes, there was precedent on the shelter initiative, a competing measure was put on. After nine years of work in committee, it was clear what was at stake in that particular competing measure. This one here, I learned about vacancy deregulation. All the legal considerations on how to frame an argument for the space between tenants. I wish it was clearly settled law and I did read cases. I read articles. I read both sides of the argument. There are many questions and I raised that with Counselor Phillips and she agreed, well, there are other questions to be answered. If that is the case, and I took her at her word, then it's not ready for primetime. Now, would I support that HECD visits this question? Yeah, sure. That, that sounds good tonight. I'll say it's not likely to be effective because we'd be trying to modify the structure of a statute and ordinance that we can't modify to what, 2025? Am I correct, Corporation Council?
2027, wasn't it?
Well, it's five years from the, from, right now we've got measures that were passed in 2022.
Right.
And it's unfortunate that we can't. See, that's the legal opinion. So 2027, it, it remains an immovable beast. All right. No matter what good work we do on committee, it's just interesting, but it doesn't change the substance. I think there's more to be said for this council to engage in its work to modify how referendum questions are presented. That might change the atmosphere. But up to this point, I have to honor the efforts made by the parties who brought forward the petition. I don't have an objection to this idea of modifying the language. I mean, "An Act to Improve Tenant Protections." It could be a stretch. Okay. It could be a stretch. Now, I will say in fairness, with some of the other material I've read from other parts of the country, there's part of that that fits into their theory as to why vacancy deregulation makes sense. So they wouldn't be so quick to chuckle that this title doesn't make sense. But I can understand that the common person might assume something by reading this title. And it goes to my overall theory on referendums. I'll close with that. Is most people just read the titles. That's why this is dangerous. You make, I read one referendum, it was 14 pages long. How many voters really read that? Come on, let's be real with each other now. If we're going to do this kind of work, we need to be real. So that's why I understand titles are everything. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Dion. First to Counselor Trevaro on Zoom and then next to Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Not sure where to begin. My thoughts have been kind of everywhere based on the comments that I've just heard. I think, you know, I was inclined to support this competing measure because I was coming at it from the perspective that it was a compromise between the, the desire that we saw as exhibited by the, the last referendum, which is now in place to have to have tenants' rights. And this, the need for landlords to, you know, recoup rising costs. And there's nothing in the competing measure that gives more rights to tenants than they have currently. It just, the, the major component for me was that it, it kind of gave some clarity to by how much rents could be increased annually rather than just kind of to whatever degree they deem appropriate. So, you know, that's, that's kind of where we are. I, I'm finding it really unfortunate that the entire debate circulates around processes rather than substance. And my hope was that through the offering of a competing measure, that would be an avenue for us as a community to get to the substance of this issue. You know, the comments from the public largely have, have centered around processes and you know, intentions. And that's really not what we should be talking about. We should be talking about, you know, what's appropriate increase in, in rent each year. What can tenants afford? What can landlords afford? So that's just where, where I was coming with this. I, I don't know that I'm totally on the same page with some of my colleagues regarding the referendum process. You know, I, I grew up in Maine and we're a referendum state. And to me, it has always been another check on the balance of powers and it's closer to a direct democracy. And to me, I, I, I like to, even though I'm, I'm on the side of the council now rather than the side of the public, I, I like to retain the idea that these referenda keep us accountable to the work that we're supposed to be doing in terms of how much it's in alignment with the sentiment of the voters. So, you know, I'm open to having those discussions in the future, but I was hoping that we could work with the process we have today to get to the, the sort of question that we need to grapple with. So, you know, if it were to be, to be offered as an amendment, I would support it. If it's not, then I suppose, well, here's one question. Do we have the, the purview to send this to the November ballot as opposed to the June ballot? If we wanted to go the route of kind of putting this whole subject through committee? I guess that's a question maybe to the clerk or to Corporation Council.
I'm, I'm looking at them. I think we just need a minute there. Good question, Counselor. We can come back to it if you want.
Well, there, there is language in, in the, in Section 939, the time of the election.
um, which has to be no less than sixty and no more than a hundred and fifty calendar days after the council meeting. And so, uh, yeah, so I think a hundred and fifty days is before November, right? That's just, yeah. Pardon? It's, yeah, no, yeah, no less than sixty and no more than a hundred and fifty, uh, days after, um, uh, after today.
Okay, but is more than a hundred and fifty days to the November election? Okay, I think that's the answer, Counselor.
For that, um, for the, the referendum, the signature referendum, we would, we're only allowed to set it for June. Um, if we, so, you know, if this amend, if the amendment were offered, I would support it today going to the ballot. If it, um, i- if we want to, as Counselor Zarro had suggested, put it, um, on a November ballot, and in the meantime, put the referendum on this ballot, um, we could go that way. I would also be open to working through some amendment language for the title, um, if counselors wanted to work that through this evening. That's just where I am at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Travarro. Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, in the backs of Counselor Travarro's comments, I think the only thing I wanted to say was, um, kind of pause for a moment and see if there was going to be a motion before we go any deeper discussing it, something that's not really on the floor. Um, and then, since I do have the mic and I have four minutes and forty seconds to go, I'm not gonna use them all. Um, I, I will say that, um, I agree a lot with what most of my colleagues have said. Um, I am interested in looking at the process and, and having the council, um, try to, uh, mirror the, the state, uh, Citizens Initiative process. Um, I, I do agree that the Citizens Initiative is intended to be a, like a, a tool that the citizens use, and I don't want to discourage its use, but I also wanna, uh, you know, I wanna acknowledge the challenges that it presents to a good governance. Um, in particularly in issues that we've highlighted as the priority for us to, to take on. So, um, all that said, I'm, I'm gonna pause with four minutes to go and see if my colleague does want to put a motion to get the competing measure on the floor.
And Counselor Phillips, I was just gonna say in response to Counsel Rodriguez, um, I think that, you know, we, we have the competing measure in the packet. If, if you want to continue to hear people speak before you offer to get a sense of the room, you can, or you can just go ahead and offer it, whatever your preference is.
No, I'd like to, um, I'd like to go and offer, and before I offer it, I just wanna, I just wanna talk about the process. Right? I, I, first of all, I just wanted to address the referendum question. I wasn't here. I, I certainly understand the frustration about referendums and competing measures. And, you know, I, I understand that. I can't speak to that because I wasn't here in this role. And so whatever happened last year or two years ago or three years ago, I can't speak to. And so again, frustrating process, sure. It is what it is. What happened, happened. And so for me, it's like, okay, well, that's what, let's, even though that was a frustrating process, how about if we leave that in the past and then go forward and think about where we are right now? Because I, again, I can't speak to that, right? And we can have conversations about referendums and all that other stuff. I also didn't create a competing measure. That was here before me. It's in the ordinance. I didn't create it. I found out that you could do a competing, competing measure. I, I saw, I had some concerns on the landlord referendum, and so I said, hey, let's do a competing measure. And so, and so that's where it ended up. It, it was, I said, okay, let's go ahead and do one. And then it's like, okay, well, what is the language? I tried to look and see and be mindful that this is a tough subject, and this is going to affect renters, and it was gonna affect landlords. And I said, what it, to me, what, what is fair out of this? What can we do? Um, and I tried to work with, I not tried, I worked with Corporation Council to figure out the correct language, the language that it came from me. Language that came from me in order to bring this forward. And, and, and to, you know, and, and I will, uh, I will maybe, uh, continue on to what my Counselor, uh, Counselor Travarro said, to get, to, to get all chucked up about the process? I thought I followed the process. I saw a competing measure. I got some language. I talked to Corporation Council. I talked to my colleagues. I talked to my colleagues, right? I said, hey, I'm gonna be putting this forward. I don't know what, I don't know all the language. I wanted to wait for a Corporation Council, uh, to give me something, and then I sent it out. And not only that, but I'd made personal phone calls to people to say, what do you think? Do you have anything that you want to change? Let's have a conversation about this. Right? I reached out. And so to say I didn't follow the process or, right, whatever, uh, I, I followed the process that I thought I was supposed to follow. And for us to get tripped up over the process versus what's in this language? And we have something, the, the, the initiative I want to put forward is for us to look at a couple of things. One is bank rent, to take the ten percent and make it twenty percent. So let's, let's look at the issue here, right? Let's look at the issue. Let's leave process out there, you know, for a minute, and let's leave referendum versus competing measures versus this versus that. Let's leave all that out in, in, in the, in the, in the peripheral for a minute. So what I want to bring forward is to increase the rents from ten percent to twenty percent. Right? The other thing is, uh, supplying an affidavit for somebody to say, yep, you know what? This was volunteer voluntary between you and I. This was voluntary. I'm not asking you to leave. I'm not evicting you. You and I have agreed that it's time for us to part ways. You're gonna go your way, and I'm gonna go mine. It also looks at increasing the relocation costs. Our priority is housing. We absolutely cannot put anybody else in a warming center or in a school or in a family shelter. We can't. So in order for us, in order for us to be fair to,
Second warning.
In order for us to be fair to our tenants, it's like, okay, well, you need, you need to be relocated. We don't, nobody has security deposit and all that other stuff, so it's, it's also taking a look and increasing those relocation costs, uh, about two thousand, to, to two thousand or two months rent. Um, and also, um, you know, what it means to be voluntary terminated from, from an apartment. And, you know, we did talk to experts. They're right here. Did, was it set up separately? And did we get in a room and, you know, have a great, have a conversation about it? No. Well, actually, we did because we're all in the room, and we did have a conversation about it. But we did have a conversation about it, and there were folks that came forward that said rent in Portland is unaffordable. I know. Do you want me to stop?
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just giving you that look because, uh, after the five minutes is up, we usually say.
The five minutes is up?
Right, that, right.
So the five minutes is up?
That's when, yes, um, yes.
That's okay. I, I mean, I think, I think, um, you know what I mean? I, I think people get it. Uh, I know it's late. I, you know, I know all of those things. I, I do not support putting it on the ballot in November. What happens to the referendum? The referendum, if we put it on the ballot in June, I don't know what will happen. But if we put this on the ballot in November, I don't, I, I don't know what happens. I, I don't have a crystal ball. All I'm saying is, is that we have a competing measure. To me, it's great language on how we can protect both the landlord and the tenants. Um, obviously, I am going to vote for it. Um, and.
Counselor, would you like to offer a motion to amend Order 157?
Oh, sorry, yes. I'd like to offer a motion to amend 157.
And is there a counselor who would like to second that? Counselor Ali with a second. So we've got a motion to, we've got a motion and a second to amend Order 157. So we're in the amendment. And I'm gonna take this opportunity to say a few words, and then I'll call on you, Counselor Pelletier. Um, so I appreciate this conversation. I really wish we were truly talking about the substance of the competing measure tonight. And, um, instead, we have been talking about policy, um, or, sorry, process. Um, so I do want to first start out by thanking everybody who, who came and has stuck with us all night and who offered public comment, whether you're on Zoom or in person. I know that it's a long night, and, um, I appreciate that. For me, I, I, I really want policy that's durable. And, and my, I have to say that I feel like it's accomplished best through an inclusive process, the democratic process that is deliberately slow, and that's frustrating. But it's the way that policymaking was developed in our country and how we ideally do the work here in Portland with representative government is to build an inclusive process so that we get those stakeholders that were mentioned earlier. We get citizens, we get experts, we get policymakers, we get Corporation Council, we get city staff. We really talk about the issue, and we come up with a compromise as a result of debate and dialogue before policy is put forward for consideration and action. So for me, any ready-baked ordinance that comes to the council or to the community feels like it's not, it's, it's antithetical to durability because that durability was taken away because there was no process. So that's always been my struggle with the citizen initiative process is we get something fully baked and we put it on a ballot, and the drafting is done. We didn't, nobody gets any say. And so that public process regarding the substance, to me, is very important. It may be that somebody has a great idea for policy, but if it's not done in public with the opportunity for dialogue and debate, it just doesn't strike me as durable. And that's part of what I think we're struggling with here in Portland is that we're approving things on ballots that are ready-baked, and they're put before voters. And then people say, how do we change this? Okay, let's go back to the citizen initiative process because the council can't handle it in five years. And so we end up talking about this process versus substance because we're stuck in that tangle right now. I don't think it's ideal. Um, I think that the council has become an arbiter of political adversaries. This is what I have experienced over my three and a half years here. Starting in the summer of 2020, the council had to decide about putting, um, citizen initiatives on ballots. Should there be a competing measure? What do we do? Do we adopt? If we adopt, are we circumventing the process that citizens want? So I think that the council has become an arbiter of political adversaries because, um, we're getting the adversaries who are putting citizen initiatives out there. So our role is we're sort of stuck in the middle. What do we do with these things? Do we put them on this ballot or that ballot? What are the voters gonna do? Um, it's, it's frustrating. I think all of us raised our hand for public service because we wanted to be policymakers, and we wanted to be part of a governing body, and we want to, um, act as fiduciaries. And, um, we're stuck in the middle of people saying, don't use citizen initiatives for policy. Then we're stuck with people saying, don't offer competing measures. You need to respect the citizen initiatives. And that's exactly what has happened to us many times at this table in the last three and a half years. Don't touch the citizen initiatives. That's democracy. And I'm fine with that, as, as was mentioned earlier. Lots of policymaking happens through referendum, but it is really difficult when we get the competing messages from the community, don't offer a competing measure. Do offer a competing measure. What's, what's, don't vote for a citizen initiative. None of them do vote for citizen initiatives. So it's, it's tricky, um, and frustrating, I would say, um, at this table because we love this work. We would, I think that that's why you raise your hand for public services because you actually really love the committee work and the slow iterative process to make good policy. So, you know, we're not required to advance a competing measure, of course. We're not required to do that. We have a community group that wants that. Um, for me, consistent with past practice, um, we have been told, let the initiatives go to the voters. If it's gone by way of a legitimate process that's in our current code, let it go to the voters. Do I always love it? Not really. Um, but this is what we've got right now. So as, as was mentioned earlier, I think that review of substance of, of Chapter Nine, which is on the council's calendar, uh, will begin that work on March 27th, is imperative. Um, and, uh, and, and so to me, that's where this lives. So I'm not inclined to support an amendment tonight. Um, I always, I always am, uh, appreciative of, of people bringing things forward. I haven't had the, the chance to really discuss the content or the substance with the sponsors. Um, we've, we've, I, I feel like unfortunately, we haven't discussed the substance. We've actually just discussed the process, and it all happened so rapidly that, uh, something hit our agenda packet on Friday afternoon. Um, and so I haven't had time to digest that substance. So I won't be voting for the amendment. I will be voting to send the citizen initiative to the June ballot. Thank you for the time. I think Counselor Pelletier, and then back to Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you. Um, I'm tired, but I, yeah, I'm, I, I feel like I, I don't know where to begin on this whole conversation, and I'm, again, I feel in disalignment with some of my colleagues. Uh, because everybody wants to do process, and everybody wants to tie it up in a bow and make it nice and neat. And there's this consistent undertone of like, we're not supposed to do it like this in process. But in terms of a competing measure, this is the process. Two counselors got together, they had a conversation with their stakeholders, or they had a conversation with community members, and they decided to create a competing measure. Um, and people put citizens referenda on the ballot. It's a process. It is the process. And I also just like to add, this is a city of renters, and it's really scary being a renter. Your future is very unknown. You have very few rights, and I'm pretty sure I'm the only renter here on the council. It's scary being an at-will tenant. It's scary wondering if you'll get evicted so that your landlord can renovate the building, and you have no money and nowhere to go. And it's scary not being able to afford your rent here. So I would love for us to be able to do this in a perfect way, but there is no perfect way because we are talking about an imperfect system with very significant power dynamic and power imbalance. And it's not ideal, but it's what we have, which is the competing measure. And I also feel like we're back on forth on like, we can't govern by referenda. We need to reel in Chapter Nine, and it's wild to me that nowhere in this body we've discussed people feeling so disenfranchised by their local government. That's why they're putting forth measures like rent control. That's why they're putting forth measures like tenant protection. So if we are gonna have a stakeholder conversation, I would love to have one about why people don't feel like their local government is in support of them. I would love for us to start there if we are gonna dissect Chapter Nine because that's a whole part of this conversation that I don't think that we talk about. I also think that there is always, like I said, a power imbalance between tenants and landlords. Whether people want it or not, it exists. Even if you are the nicest landlord in the world, you still control the livelihood of your tenants by determining how much they pay and how long they can stay in the unit, even if you never raise the rent. And I think the amendment of an act to reduce no-cost evictions is a balance, especially in terms of the relocation requirement, which I also think is fair. Landlords have normalized asking for first month's rent, last month's rent, and a security deposit before you can even rent the apartment. So I think moving this measure forward is more than fair. And at the end of the day, it's still going to be up to Portland. It's still going to be up to the voters. Just because we're putting it forward on the ballot does not mean it's automatically going to pass. And again, I think in a, in a city that is rapidly becoming unaffordable, Counselor Phillips and Counselor Travarro's amendment is fair. It feels like it is a balance, and it feels like it is fair, and I feel like they followed the process. The last thing that I'll say is I'm, I'm not gonna talk about the act to protect, the act to protect tenants' citizens referenda. Um, I'm not gonna talk about the content of that because, because I'm, I'm fine with sending it, um, so voters can support it. But I will say, there is no way I will support sending it as it is written now, um, where it says an act to protect tenants. I am not comfortable with sending that to the ballot as it is written because I think it is subjective and misleading. Somebody already said that. Um, so I don't know where others stand on that. I've heard that some counselors are in agreement with maybe amending the, the title, um, and the text. So that way, when people are going to vote, um, you know, they're clear on what they're voting on. So, yeah, I'm just gonna leave it there for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Rodriguez. Oh, and then Counselor Ali.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to say, uh, to Counselor Phillips. Um, you use the tools that are available to you, and that's fine. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that. Kudos to you and Counselor Travarro for doing that. I think, however, that when we hear like the word process thrown around, I think the, the best way, my, I hope I'm not mansplaining here. Um, the best way for me to like, to explain how I feel about it is that, you know, the, the way in which policymaking usually takes place compared to the way that, you know, this happened is a way shorter, you know, window of time. It's not as inclusive. I know that you reached out to me over the weekend. I was doing one of the four jobs that I, that I do, and I just didn't get a chance to get, you know, as much attention to it as I, as I should have. Um, so in comparison, and what, you know, a two-year process to create policy versus, you know, a weekend, clearly, one is more thorough than the other. So I think that that's the difference here. But you, you did exactly what's within your, your toolbox, you know, and kudos to you. Um, I, I will not be supporting the amendment. I will not be supporting the amendment because like I said, I just didn't think that it's a thorough process and I haven't even had a decent chance to, to dive into it. Lastly, I'm, I hear and I sympathize with the call to change the language. But in, I've not seen a motion here. So without the example, I agree with it. I don't have an emotion to offer. I'm fine putting it in as is presented. So, but I hear a lot of energy and I think we've all used up our time. So if, if we can just have a motion or, or an example of what we want the language to be, let's have that discussion and see if we're going to do it. But, but right now, that's not on the floor. So just to recap, I don't support the amendment. I guess I'm fine putting the original motion on the ballot, though my heart tells me that even that doesn't make sense. But I don't want to undermine their process.
Thank you, Councillor Rodriguez. I, I think that when it comes to any amendments outside of the motion that we're currently in, Councillor Phillips' amendment right now, that would, obviously, we don't have anything prepared or shared or in the packet. So somebody would need to come forward with something from the floor. So that's up to my colleagues to decide if you're ready to do that. In the meantime, Councillor Ali, the floor is yours and we're in the midst of discussing the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question and then I will discuss the amendment. If someone wants to bring the motion on the floor, how many votes do they need?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Just to clarify that. I know that we are having a conversation around process. I am very process.
Ali, I just, sorry, I answered real quickly. I wanted to make sure. Are you saying if someone were to offer a separate amendment that's not in the agenda packet, how many votes would it need to make its way?
Yes, that's my question.
Seven, no? Sorry, sorry, I want to, yeah.
No, just a regular majority.
Just a regular amendment, not a competing measure or a competing measure?
A, a motion to change the title.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, I misunderstood. Glad we paused. Okay, let's, let's go to the experts here.
That, that's just five votes. If it's just amendment from the floor like that, if it was a competing measure and it wasn't in the packet, then what the mayor said was correct. It would have been seven votes from the floor because it would have been an unagended item. But we're just talking a straight amendment to, to the title. It's five votes.
Yeah, I'm not often, I mean, I'm just asking because I've heard that there's a rumor that, yeah. I know we're speaking, we're having discussion about process and substance. I am extremely process oriented. And I believe that you get to substance through process. And I've been through several of these amendments and backlashes. And you should have done this, you didn't do this. There was a time that I was the only one that didn't support an amendment, that didn't join my colleagues on the council to make a public statement against a, a referendum. Why? Because I believe in process. They were accused of having gone under the rock and create a, a, a referendum without having enough public process. And I've heard that today from both sides. And I don't know what to say to that. I hope and hope that in the next few months, we will look at, is it chapter nine? Mayor, that is your favorite chapter, right? We will look at chapter nine and then find a way to fine tune that process. Like I said, I'm process oriented. Find a way to fine tune that process so that whether it is those of us who are here right now or a new group of councillors that will be discussing referendums in the near future, they don't have to go through a process like this. And Councillor Phillips, thank you for bringing this forward. I'm not supporting it. But thank you for, as Councillor Rodriguez said, you use what is available to you. I may not agree with it. But thank you for the effort. And as I said, I'm a, the process oriented, it's part of the process. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, thank you, Councillor Ali. Okay, so I think, I don't see any more hands. Oh, okay, Councillor Fornier.
Just a real quick interruption. Where we're after 10, do we need to take a motion to?
Do you want to offer a motion to continue the meeting?
I'd like to offer a motion, I guess, to continue beyond 10 o'clock now that it's 10:00.
Councillor Ali has the second. We'll take a quick vote on the motion to continue our meeting past 10:00 PM, which it is. Yes, Councillor Rodriguez?
I want to think about this. Yes.
Councillor Dion?
Yes.
Councillor Ali?
Yes.
Councillor Zaro?
Yes.
Councillor Travaro?
Yes.
Councillor Pelletier?
Yes.
Councillor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder? Yes, okay, we can continue. Thank you, thank you for that procedural check in. We're back to the amendment that's being offered to order 157. I think we're ready to vote on the amendment brought forward by both Councillor Phillips and Councillor Travaro. Councillor Fornier?
No.
Councillor Rodriguez?
No.
Councillor Dion?
No.
Councillor Ali?
No.
Councillor Zaro?
No.
Councillor Travaro?
Yes.
Councillor Pelletier?
Yes.
Councillor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
No.
Okeydoke. So the amendment fails, six to three. And I have a hand up from my colleague, Councillor Zaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If my colleagues will humor me, I'd like to make a motion to amend the title of the proposed citizen initiated referendum question. My proposed change would be to amend the title of the ordinance from an act to improve tenant protections to an act to amend rent control and tenant protections.
Can you repeat it?
Yes, so right now it is an act to improve tenant connect protections. Excuse me. And I would like to propose changing it to an act to amend rent control and tenant protections.
Second?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Councillor Zaro with Councillor Rodriguez. Before us, we've got comment from Corporation Council.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to point out a couple of quick things about some of the language in chapter nine that addresses this issue. And I think this has been brought to the council's attention in the past, but I just want to make sure that, not to overlook it, but the, the, the ordinance, chapter nine has instructions to the petitioners in a citizen referendum to submit a summary to a company, the proposed ordinance on the petition. And, and it says that the summary shall be clearly an object, or shall clearly and objectively, objectively, excuse me, describe the content of the proposal and shall be written in words with common and everyday meaning. The summary shall not contain language designed to promote or oppose the proposal. And so, so that's what it, that's how it describes. That's sort of instructions to the petitioners. The, the text of the ordinance goes on to say that the summary included on the petition shall accompany the title and text of the ordinance on the ballot. So on the one hand, it gives instructions to the petitioners to do a certain thing. On the other hand, it instructs the council to include that language on the, on the ballot. And that appears in another, in another place as well on the, under the form of the ballot where it says, in, in a situation like this where we're including the title and summary only on the ballot, it says that the summary provided with the petition shall accompany the title on the ballot in place of the full text. So I wanted to bring that to the council's attention. I think there's, you know, perhaps some ambiguity in that language. Maybe something that can be clarified in the future as the council's considering amendments to article or to, to chapter nine. But, you know, I just want to say I can't, I can't guarantee that there wouldn't be some challenge down the road regarding a change to the title or the summary. But I know that the council has also done it in the past. And so I just want to highlight that issue.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Councillor Zaro?
Thank you for the clarification, Corporation Council. And I, I know the council has done it before a couple of times since I've been on the council. Just a point of clarification, are you saying that if we are going to make an amendment to the title, then because the summary accompanies it, we would do that to the summary as well?
The, I think the rule applies equally to the title and the summary. And so if, I think in the past, my understanding, I don't know, I, I don't, I'm aware of situations where the council and Danielle's been around longer than I have, she can weigh in. But I'm aware of situations where the council has amended the summary in the past. I don't know if the council has amended the, the title. In this case, the change that's being proposed to the title is, I believe, very objective. It's, it states exactly what it's doing, which is amending the rent control and tenant protection ordinance. That's the title of the existing ordinance. And so I, I don't anticipate any substantial, you know, problems with that. But I just wanted to make sure to highlight the language and.
Yeah, I think that in the past, we have, we've actually had councillors get into the summary language itself and actually amend that. I don't, I was trying to think of a time where someone amended the title. I don't know if I recall one specifically, but we have council, past councils have amended the, the summary. So I think it's due to that ambiguity that Michael described. But he, he was right to flag it. I think it's been flagged in the past as well, but.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to amend the title. We've already got a second. Thank you, Councillor Dion. A lot of enthusiasm. So we have that on the floor to discuss. Corporation Council, I'm actually going to discuss and go back to you. At the very top of what you were talking about in chapter nine, can you just read that initial part again that you were referencing when you started out the discussion? It doesn't sound like you're saying you can or can't do something. You're saying be aware that there's language in chapter nine.
Yeah, ye- yes, do you want me to, sorry, do you want me to read the language again?
Yes, please.
So, yeah, this is in, just to be clear, section 937. This is, this is instructions to the petitioners on the form of the petition. And it says, at the time of submitting the proposed ordinance, the petitioners must submit a summary to accompany the proposed ordinance on the petition. The summary shall clearly and objectively describe the content of the proposal and shall be written in words with common and everyday meaning. The summary shall not contain language designed to promote or oppose the proposal. And then, and then it goes on to say that in the event the, that sufficient signatures are obtained to submit the ordinance to the voters, the summary included on the petition shall accompany the title and text of the ordinance on the ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate that. Councillor Zaro, I, I don't have any problem supporting this title amendment. Councillor Zaro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One thing I did notice though, it's, is the title is the first line of the summary. So we do actually have to change the summary if we're going to change the title. Just to make them the same.
Good catch. Any council discussion on, at least the amendment that we're in, which is revision to the title? Councillor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Councillor Zaro. I like it, I will support it. Thank you.
Other input? Any, thank you, Councillor Fornier.
Thank you, sorry, my hands, I'm tired. So I, I like it, I'll support this. I wonder if we're adjusting the summary language to then match what the title is. I'm just drawn to the, the rest of the summary language to be more plain, plainly aligned with what the actual changes are. And so the way that it reads currently is the act removes incentives for landlords to increase rents for existing tenants and discourages no cause evictions by allowing for the establishment of new base rents at the time of new tenancy. So I think part of that is factual and then part of that is some assuming or subjective. So the removing incentive for landlords, it just to me feels like that's a little subjective. But I think you can say what it's exactly doing, but the might not, I might not be making sense at this point. The other, the last piece of that as well is the act also brings Portland's rent stabilization ordinance into alignment with most local and national rent stabilization ordinances. Again, to me, that's subjective. I, I don't have any factual information to base that on and nothing within the ordinance itself speaks directly to that. So to me, I don't know why you would include that part. So I would propose summary language that really is more aligned to like an act to amend rent control and tenant protections. Amends the existing rent control and tenant protection ordinance. I've been writing this out, sorry. It doesn't make sense. To allow for the establishment of new base rents at the time of new tenancy, but only when a prior tenant moves out voluntarily. It's removing just all the additional language around things that you could assume, depending on what side of the argument you're on.
Thank you, Councillor Fornier. Yeah. I guess I'll, I'm comfortable with the amendment offered by Councillor Zaro to the title and replacing the initial element of the summary that references the title. At this moment, I don't, we, we've had the summary language now for a bit of time. And I, we, nobody, we, nobody's come forward with a prepared amendment. So I feel like I'm not equipped at the moment to respond to something on the fly. That's where I am. We can always go ahead and just vote on the amendment that's before us and see where we get, Councillor Zaro. Okay. Why don't we, Councillor Pelletier?
Can you just read it, read the amendment again?
Do you want me to read it? I think, an act to amend rent control and tenant protection. We, we don't have an amendment on the text at this time. That would come next. The council, Corporation Council?
Yeah, I think, just to clear, I think to, to clarify that issue, the, the first line of the title, well, the, the title and the first line of the summary are the same. And so that change would be made in two places.
So Councillor Zaro, would you want to change your proposed amendment to include the first line of the summary to mirror the changed title?
Yes, would you like me to say that whole thing?
Okay, so I'm looking, I think Councillor Rodriguez, if you're okay with that. So it would be a change to the title as just discussed and then a change to the summary language to reflect the new title. Sound good? Okay, that's what we've got before us right now. I think we're going to go ahead and vote on that amendment. Councillor Fornier?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Dion?
Yes.
Councillor Ali?
Yes.
Councillor Zaro?
Yes.
Councillor Travaro?
Yes.
Councillor Pelletier?
Yes.
Councillor Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder? Yes. Okay, so we are actually back at order 157 as amended. We can go ahead and vote on order 157 as amended. Or if there's additional information or items for consideration from the council, we can take them at this time. I think we're ready to vote on order 157.
Oh, just a quick clarification. This is to place it on the June ballot.
That's right, that's what, yeah, the order reads that we would be, the city council will vote to set the election date of June 13th.
Thank you. That's helpful, thank you.
Councillor Zaro?
Sorry, now, just now that we're in it, Councillor Fornier actually brought up a really good point in the last sentence of the summary. And the act also brings Portland's rent stabilization ordinance into alignment with most local and national rent stabilization ordinances. You actually bring up a really good point. I don't recall seeing anywhere that we have a local ordinance that this brings, this brings this in compliance to at the local or the state level. Do we have any information that, that, that clarifies that this is fact or not?
I'm going to look to Corporation Council for that.
Nothing was submitted to my office to to either support that or, or refute it. I, yeah, I, I'm not aware of that.
It's language that came as from the petitioners.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the summary that's drafted. The title, the summary and the ordinance language itself were all drafted by the petitioners. It's the language that was included on the petition and circulated by the circulators.
Councillor Dion?
I would move to strike the sentence. Because we don't know. We simply don't. I have an opinion based on some reading, but it's not, it's not reliable. It's one man's opinion. I mean, others could dispute it even if it were passed as to whether or not it's in alignment. So I would become, I don't think removing that last sentence harms the core question being advanced by the proposition, so.
We have an amendment, we have a motion to amend the summary language to strike the last sentence. Second. We're in discussion on that. Corporation Council, can you wait? Corporation Council, can you weigh in on that? Can you offer any opinion about the removal of language from the petitioners at this stage?
I think that the, it seems to me to be an overall sort of more substantial change than changing the title as has been proposed or has already been approved. You know, I've read the language in the ordinance that describes, you know, what is supposed to be included on the ballot, which is the summary that was included there. At the same time, the council has changed the summaries in the past. And so, you know, I don't, I think I would agree, I think, with Council Dion that, and Council Fornier, that that is, the statement in the last sentence is not something that's addressed in the changes to the ordinance. And so I don't know that it has any real bearing on the substance of the ordinance. But again, it would be a decision of the council on whether or not to include that. And I see Danielle is chomping at the bit.
I'm remembering why we got into this in the past. We chose not to put summaries on a couple of times and put the entire ordinance language on, which took all of these questions away, because it takes you out of that provision you're reading. And so we put the whole thing on. But the thing that that does, obviously, is make the ballot huge and very expensive, and we've had some issues with that. So my one question to you, Ashley, is at each polling place, the language will be available, right?
Yeah, the language is going to be posted on our website, and it will also be available at every single polling location.
Okay. So, I mean, we'll have the language itself there. So I'm not sure removing that sentence really takes away any of the substance. But I think that's the other option for the council is to put the whole hit and caboodle right onto the ballot. But that does make for a very pricey and difficult ballot for voters, because it becomes very long.
Unbudgeted expense.
Yeah, an unbudgeted expense, which Ashley, the city clerk, just reminded me of, and they are very costly.
We've done it. Council Dion, you had your hand up.
I don't want to get myself in trouble here, but I think the proponents say that this initiative can be summarized in one sentence. I think I heard that clearly. And then when you look at the text, it is one sentence wrapped in all existing other protections from the standing ordinance, which I think was a way to assert, we're not disturbing anything other than this one specific issue, and our issue is addressed by one specific sentence. So I think you've got that in the summary, Corporation Council. And striking the last sentence, I guess, as I think about it, one could read that as an implicit endorsement of the proposition, that others have adopted it, so therefore it must be okay. Whether that's true or not, I think just reinforces the idea. It's not a neutral statement. The other sentences are neutral and allows the voter to draw their own conclusion as to the anticipated benefits of the proposition. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Dion. And I think that we have, as a council, made that choice in the past to be, to change language to make it as objective and neutral as we can. Council Zaro, did you have a hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. One last thing. I just want to piggyback on what Council Dion and Council Fornier were saying. I don't think there are any municipalities in the state of Maine that have a rent control ordinance on the books. South Portland is the closest, but so taking that into account, I agree with you entirely. There's no, I mean, what is it even referencing? So I would support, I would support striking that last sentence.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to go ahead and vote on that motion from Council Dion with a second from Council Fornier. I'm just confirming that to strike the last sentence in the summary language.
Council Fornier?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Ali? Council Zaro?
Yes.
Council Travar?
Yes.
Council Pelletier?
Yes.
Council Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Okay, that was an amendment within Order 157 to remove the last sentence of the summary. We're back to Order 157 as amended. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on Order 157 as amended.
Council Fornier?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Ali? Council Zaro?
Yes.
Council Travar?
Yes.
Council Pelletier?
Yes.
Council Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Order 157 as amended passes unanimously. This will be a question on the ballot on June 13th. So thank you again, everybody, for being here tonight for thoughtful deliberation at the council table. Thank you to staff for all of your help and support. Thank you to the community for coming out and being with us this evening and offering your voice. This meeting, oh, wait, I need a motion to adjourn. I was going to just adjourn us. Council Ali?
Second.
Council Zaro with a second, and we'll go ahead and vote on our adjournment.
Council Fornier?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Ali? Council Zaro?
Yes.
Council Travar?
Yes.
Council Pelletier?
Yes.
Council Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Our meeting is adjourned.